This is the men's let board meeting for October 30, 2024. And I'm the co-meeting to order and if you could please stand and join me for the pledge.
The United States of America and your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
This meeting is being recorded in the beginning. We have all the select board members are here in person and are attending remotely. This is going to be a joint meeting with the finance committee. They do not yet have a.
Oh yeah.
So, so when they have a quarterly, we maybe will ask you to call your meeting to order as well. Alright, so I just want to start off by saying that we think this may be a long meeting. We have a number of things that will need discussion. We'll be finalizing the special talent meeting more and we expect that to be have the potential for a lot of discussion, but we will try to move along, move things along as much as possible. So we'll pay attention with the thought and stick to our estimated times where possible. And we may be able to move a few of the housekeeping things towards the end of the meeting. We will have an executive session at the end of the meeting. Then we will get there. Alright, so think, go to like to do like, so you want to wait, we can start in and then whenever you're ready. Is that, sorry?
No, you're wrong.
You did.
Yeah, Ron.
Oh, perfect. Alright, open up forum, so we can call the FinCom meetings order, it says 30 minutes.
And then, yeah, because you have some, some members who need some remotely.
Yeah, we have Ron, Nick remote, so whenever, if we need to take a vote, are we going to take any votes today?
So my anticipation would be that you would take votes to sponsor or start to recommend market goals related kind of financing point to it. Don't really have to do it today, but our deadlines for printing is Monday, so. Good.
We'll be voting today. Alright, so Nick and Ron, please, when you vote, make sure to say your name before casting your vote.
Will do.
Will do, okay.
Alright, thanks very much. Okay, so let's start off with our usual item number two, citizen statements and petitions. Have anyone here in the room or online? Do not see any?
I'll say FinCom member John Hodgson just joined as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then for meeting minutes, do we want to do this now or do we want to push this to the end? This housekeeping.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, now, so what we will, I will be taking a few items out of order so that we can address all of the issues that directly relating to special time meeting early, so we will move along to, I'd like to start with the capital planning update. So item five.
So.
Folks, as you're aware on the headboard, the capital improvements working group along with Vikings and others, and we're going to give you a brief update. I'll share this to you, I don't know if anyone has it on the screen. Wait for a second. Okay. Very good. Okay, very good. There's going to be a brief update where we're at and we're moving forward. Agenda, going to recap what we did in 25, 24, 25 planning. We're going to talk about a process timeline that we see for the future of this plus what we can execute in the past and current. We're going to discuss the current few items, policy of procedure, recommendations, and next steps. And we'll be open for questions and a few appendixes attached to this. On the next page, we started the activity late in 24, 25 cycles. We did a quick equipment inventory with everyone, lead to facilities, and pool of great people give us that information in those three categories. We consolidated the department capital ask list for the cross five year timeline. And we reviewed the priorities and requests based on a matrix and cube that we worked up for criticality of the need and requirements. We had 15 specific requests across five departments. And we were able to handle $1 million worth of investment from CPA funds, ARPA funds, ledig and land stats. So that was our activity just to begin this process, to get it moving in the 24, 25 budget year. And then we also initiated a draft, the policy procedures document, we'll have some recommendations. The next timeline, and again, this is work in progress, process. The next timeline shows the process timeline proposal on the top. And what we recommend for the future, which looks to July or March activity, for press solicitation to the final retaliation. And this also shows what we did in 25, as you can see, we've transferred it to 26. But we were able to achieve or to get it in time for budget process. We spent a little bit of time on the 25, 26 actual where we're at today. We requested some early on solicitations. We compiled those solicitations of the department departments and what their capital needs are. And the things to be done is departmental reviews, which we're looking to do in November, December timeframe. Finalize and prioritize those department reviews. And then have a final recommendation in March.
Yes, so the idea of being that we have some large working sessions with the group where we have blocks in time, department heads come in and have their own scheduled blocks of time and talk through the request from last year, how that, you know, what they're adding, subtracting, changing for this year, the new things that came on. And it will be this, you know, collaborative session where, where the group gets to hear capital leads across. There are a lot of anticipation is, you know, 26 to build on 25, so 27 will be love 26. And departments that have these capital needs and are going to need to refresh this plan, right? It's only going to get a five year plan, but it's, it's rolling and we kind of reset that window each year. That it will be just a regular part of our budget process. So I said send out my budget handbooks in January that says, you know, here's your overview for the operations budget and people may be used to that cadence. It's going to be sort of the same thing in, you know, August, September, August, September route saying, hey, start thinking about these things. And we'll roll them all together and it'll just be part of the yearly budget process. Whereas now it seems like this, this new, what is new, this new process where department heads are being asked to do this additive thing. After a few cycles, it will just be, you know, part of.
Yeah, the advantage is just going through the process through the beginning of the 24, 25 and now the 26. Because then we're going to start to get a cadence and view of what's going to happen and what the needs are for the next five years. And that's extremely critical for us to manage our operation. The, so where we're at in the 25, 26 process, progress and next steps. There's a guideline that's been drafted by the group. I think we're prepared to potentially, it's town administrator, the slide board, begin to review. Think, Mike, we worked on it.
The policy and procedure?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we talked about it, probably going to roll it into the overall financial policy document.
Yeah.
But the idea was to kind of line that up, like we had the select board policies and as a draft is edited redline, then it'll be sent to us as a board review. But we're assuming that, take it out of the working group's hands and pass it to Jeremy to be incorporated into that process.
Yeah, I think it's for sure. I think Jeremy touched upon it, we can handle the capital process, we can, a town administrative management and the typical financial planning that will be incorporated into. We are only looking at SharePoint solution that we're going to launch, but we still have specialties we're working on. Once we get that, that'll be an easy way to put your input into forms, automatically update, be able to see the capital requirements across all departments. And a good view for everyone to take a look at throughout the time goes. Execute the, when the process is starting to develop, request the engagement to your department heads with the capital budgets and their needs, request it on the way and then the review cycles, other set at some time. One of the things that we need the select board to action upon is to implement is a formal capital improvements committee. I guess it's, um, to the point that we engage with the department heads in ongoing. This group is to be advised or not to be decurbing. And I think that's the point, but, but we're not here to say what's important, what's not important. We're here to help coach and guide and make sure it lines up with the other priorities. We'll have FinCom represent the representation of this committee. And we'll have strong participation. Mike, I think you're going to be an advisor to it.
Yeah, I'm the liaison to the capital planning committee that doesn't exist, so. When we form it, I will then be the liaison to the committee.
I'm talking again.
But I think it's, we've sort of gone from sort of kind of getting base work done so that we actually have some semblance of analysis and review in the capital space. To the point where we actually need, as a board, need to formally appoint, create, fill the committee that's in our bios.
Have you thought about how like, like how the information is going to flow through like FinCom? Through capital, FinCom and then budget, like how that's all going to flow, the direction that's all going to go in. It's probably more important in those committees.
Well, I think what, I think to Jeremy's point is this is not going to be a separate process. This can be part of the budget cycle. And I think FinCom being, you know, one to two members of FinCom, if you can get that many to be part of the actual committee provides the information pipeline to FinCom, but this should go through the normal budget calendar.
So like when we work on the 26 budget, the cap, 26 capital budget. So it's, it's not really the stuff we're talking about tonight to appropriate free cash for. And to tell me, it's what's going, what are we going to do with fiscal 26? So it'll be part of the budget building process and what I, what I think it will hopefully streamline is that when we're at this point next year in fiscal 26, free cash, we do stuff, FinCom has got the questions of where did this come from, why are you doing this, what's?
That I can provide that advisory here.
It's gone through, it's, we've talked about it, here's our capital improvement plan, either C I P. But we'll put it online in a PDF form and say, here's our plan and here's what we're doing. And then when we come to this meeting, we can say, we can go back to that plan and say, here's the thing that's happened, here's the things we're doing, here's why we're doing it.
And I think that even the stuff, items we're talking about tonight are actually within the plan program from last year. So these aren't all new items, these were things that were either targeted for FY 26 or future years, we actually pulled things forward, like the library paving, that was actually FY 27.
So things can get more sunlight, more, more eyes.
And I think from a taxpayer standpoint, we should, we need to make this plan available so that we understand where things are going. So it becomes source material for the budget process.
Yeah. I would assume that the capital improvement committee would be the front door to folks like, you know, there is a group of people who wants to rally for the fire, for the fire situation. While it still comes through the chief, it's the opportunity for the taxpayer to come and say, hey, you know, I know that we're talking about spending money. We believe that there's a level of importance here and this is their first door to say this is where this will come.
Interesting question. I mean, I think that the committee, as I see it, is more of an agent to the finance team in terms of supporting that process.
Yeah.
And literally all department heads and committees should be going through the TA because the TA and the finance team is actually going to vet items before this working group or committee starts to think it through. So there'll be an initial vetting done, so how does it fit into the overall strategy of the town? Where does it stand? Is it ready to be looked at for a capital budget at this point? So if we need a new building, as an example, it's a great idea, of Recfields right now.
Yeah.
That's not ready for execution, that is ready for assessment, planning, we'll talk about that later, right? But I would think that the, the front door is probably, I would say, the TA and the department. This group of committee members and at large residents that want to participate, they're actually almost insulated in the sense they're getting it, they're looking at, finding recommendations based on discussions with department heads with the guidance of the TA to say, this is what we think makes sense, is how much we can do, we can't do. But ultimately, FinCom, the select board, TA, department heads, make the decisions and bring it to the floor.
Right.
What's the size of capital, like what's our cut of five?
That's in the bios. The makeup, we, we make suggestions or recommendations for makeup and be in terms of representation of other communities plus at large positions, and that's part of the policy.
And then as far as like money amount, what, what are, what, what do we consider as part of that?
Hundred thousand dollars can be used for like.
Okay. Let me keep kicking, I mean, we talked about software yesterday as an example. So it's a, that's sort of operational, not really the capital, things like that, but you know, things will come at, it's a, it's a living, breathing policy procedure document. And, you know, we just, I think now the, the select needs it officially, populate that committee. Hopefully we can fix stuff.
We're going to have that on agenda, hopefully in the next few meetings.
So we have, so we have a capital improvement committee right now, capital planning committee, I can't forget that. And so my intent was to have it on the agenda soon, but to come back and review the charter that we have, review the charge to the committee to make sure that when it stood out at that point and became dormant until now, we have the same.
One thought I had, I, I know this was, you know, basically this whole committee process was established by a special act, which also caps the number. Putting in a cat likes, count 200,000. So anything to address that, so that's kind of a, a little bit of that.
So, you know, we have a special act, we talked about it in, so we have a special act, if you look at our bios and labs, that allows us a capital expenditure stabilization fund each year. And caps are concentrated at $100,000. It doesn't cap any capital expenditure, actual expenditure from the town. So like in here, there's a, you know, ask for appropriation for $335,000 for a street sweep or a capital expenditure that the town wants to make and you can go ahead and do that. So it just caps the amount we can kind of set aside for future restricted use. You can do whatever you want. Yeah, on a year to year basis, so it limits your ability to limit your boards. If it was a million dollars, if you put a million dollars, you can be restricted in future boards, say that $100,000 is going for capital, because it can't be used for.
Yeah.
Everything's not.
Okay. The other point that we talked about is to look into getting a consultant to review our, to give us another view of potential life of the things. Other than just department heads and just our private knowledge that they have, like the professional asset management.
And one of, one of the large projects that's being underway right now will comply for grants. I'm trying to break me on the numbers, but it's something like $200,000 for a consultant to come in and do a Culver inventory for the town. So, you know, Providence, it's a, a large and important project and we're putting a lot of time, resources into it. But there's lots of Culvers in town, the non-invariant degrees were there. So to have an inventory and then an assessment of all of those and to use that as an approach similar to the pavement management study, what we say, you know, this, a dispatching third party said this is your prioritization and then it's up to this board, this community to go and find money, it was like that. But it doesn't become a fine, that was once a dude, when. So we can apply for that grant, particularly here in the spring, there's a local match to it, so we'll talk about that later too.
The, the definition around capital and assets, things like that, so roads are capital assets. Culvers are capital assets, so we don't really think, we never really thought about infrastructure in the past, but I think we're sort of broadening that to make sure that we're approaching this in a thoughtful manner.
So an official consultant would, it's just as assessment there, does that mean valuation? Or does that mean everything, that's useful life, value, you know, position in, in the community, all that kind of stuff?
That would be, that would be the intent of it. Similar to, as Mike said, similar to the, to the pavement study where we hired, we hired professionals to tell us this is the state of the roads and this is, you know, this is the process and the hierarchy of which one should be replaced. Same thing with the Culvers.
And this is really an idea that was tossed, you know, put forward earlier over the summer, saying this would be a good thing to consider. So what the scope and the focus would be of something like this, TBD.
Yeah.
Because I'm not as familiar with it, but I know the schools had a third party come in, they did a full inventory and breakdown assessment of all their buildings and everything within their, their infrastructure. I'm not sure it's that, but it's, we're probably going to, we think it's worthwhile to discuss and say, it's something.
Let's go with the magnitude. Person group endorse.
If you look at the next slide, there's any other questions, so. There are appendixes to this. This is the 25 recommendations that we incorporated, $100,000. You see that we supported fire, highway police, COA through CAF, which is the recreational activities. If the center is approved, there's some parks in here. And that's things that we're going to handle as a working, presenting select. A view, a glimmer, this is just a start, we're still working on 26. But here's what we see in the pipeline for the 26 capital program summaries. If you're in care, you know, we need someone that's going to take care of, I think, was ARPA funds.
A lot of this is supposed to be taken care of with free cash tonight, fiscal 25, which is what my God already said about advancing 26 into, into 25, deploying some of those forward. So when we actually do prevent the fiscal 25 cap, or fiscal 26 capital program, you know, this is at the start of our process or in the end of it. You know, because so much of it is hopefully advanced into fiscal 25, if existing resources, we can then pull stuff forward from future, future years into 26.
I think that goes back to your point earlier, like it's a working process. A roadmap, so that when we see opportunities to pull things forward, we can. And then look at the, look at the prioritization that you.
And to that point, the two highlighted cells you see in the screen, those are two items actually we're pulling forward, I think they're part of the free cash discussion today.
Yeah, the two highlighted were, the top one was before. And the bottom one was discussed originally in ARPA and then the board had asked for a more comprehensive technology meeting assessment rather than just a laboratory room. So that, that's not, that's not constantly updated in your fees. It's a little bit more complicated than, it's a more long range to get that asked underway, so it's not yet here. Perhaps it does truly live in fiscal 26.
That's all I have to say. On sliding, the FY 25 capital other recommendations, you said those were, those have already been addressed in page one?
So all of these were taken care of in one way or another, it's not all through free cash, there are some that are through ARPA, some through Manysale.
Yeah, but already, yeah.
So $1 million is about, you know, a little bit less than 5% of our operating budget. So to do, to do a million dollars in capital is, is, is very substantial.
Yeah, can, can we amend this to show where the funds were allocated from, for your time?
Yeah, the actual source document, so. And actually, if you go on the SharePoint site, you, you should be there, you go to FY 24 folder, you'll see the details on this.
I don't want to be able to, I haven't compared it before we were, so.
And then that's operational two, Mike, so if you look at the two leases, is it going for the cruisers? That's baked into Chief Percy's budget. And, but it's still part of the process, capital process, so it's here, but it's handled through letting.
Yeah, and, yeah, so even if something is in the levy, it's still, still a capital investment. And I want to point out, because before I said $25,000 for five year useful life, we see a $3,000 study on here. One thing that we're trying to implement as part of this process is how iterative a large scale project is. And that before you get to the $100,000, you know, land improvement or whatever it is, you need to go through the feasibility, the study, the engineering, all those things. And while those discrete components may be less than our capital threshold, we think about it as a, as a project.
And it was, it was initially the senior center, senior, senior community center effort, but due to the source of the funding, we then broke that up into three separate articles. Two passed, one didn't, well, all three passed, one didn't pass the ballot. So that's why it's still, it was part of the larger effort.
And to your point, you're right, the effort's going to be built with a 88 compliant terms, so you're going to be the best of the two cables. But for Pan to be able to do the study, which is going to be getting, it's a small amount.
I, I think it would be in future presentations, it would be good to see just like a number of, 3,000 of. Cause I, cause now I don't know, now I don't know any of those.
Now I don't know any of those.
Yeah.
I mean, projected.
We gotta think of looking where we came from.
Right. And to that point, I think each one of those line downs are pretty singular in nature.
Yes. I think the only one that's not is probably blocking.
Right, but I don't know that until you tell me, that's all, so.
Well, we can step through it, but these are the first.
No, no, you just told me, I'm saying in the future.
The details certainly have, the presentation.
So I think I would like to move along to the next item, so thank you so much for that, that was a very, very useful update and with discussing the rest to have. I did want to make sure that we have that since a number of capital related expenses are going to be discussed or possible allocations and appropriations. So our next item on here is, do we want to move to the highway now? I didn't notice there was some reason for that thing, okay. So, yeah, so then we have the senior and community setup update and this.
Two hats.
I do hope this can be so much short, we've had a lot of presentations about that, but I don't believe there is going to be a presentation to the finance committee about the new proposal. So I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity for you as finance committee to, to hear, you know, from the committee and hear from Jeremy about those. I know you probably talked about some of it at last night's meeting, the finance committee meeting.
Yeah, we didn't talk about the, we didn't talk about too many of the details, we have money with the media on the board, so.
Okay.
We touched on it, I think we're all pretty familiar, so.
Great, great, but I want to make sure that you, to me, to have the information formally presented to you because we'll be asked to take a position on this.
Well, we'll give you a, a cleft nut type of approach, but we can get into details. From a standpoint of a project, we're just in the information phase, we have a meeting last night again, which can be recorded. Contain the design specs and the information. The proposal that was presented to the town and mayor's 13th, two, and expenses, it was about 11,000, 11,700 square feet. The new proposal was coming in at 11, 9, E4P, 490, I think, 11, 9. And it's down to 9,600 square feet approximately. So the committee went off taking advice from the select board and input from the town. And we tried to figure out what, considerably lost by 52 votes in the town meeting. And the need is still there. The committee recognized the fact we're still against support, seems correct. There's eighty eight inefficiencies throughout the building. And we still have all the original needs we had before, but we tried to figure out a way, how to make more power to the community. We put some attendant access, we went through each one of our activities. And we came up with a utilization factor of about a hundred and twenty five percent of our current facility. The new facility can come in around eighty percent utilization. Which is a little bit more of a growth, which is excellent. And we still can support the community. We did lose space, we did knock out rooms for knockout area. But we still maintain the principles of having a major area on top of a facility. Be divided, so you can only one operation at one time. The killer down there right now is you have one major room that can actually function successfully, because the other one's not very ADA friendly. So we have one room that constantly gets reconfigured, rechanged and rechecked. And then limits what we can do, can only do launches a few days later because we had other programs. Like expand that program for nutrition. So this new facility still supports capability of putting a hundred and twenty five people in the top nine two room. But supports community activity for downstairs for scouts or lions or brothers or anyone else that needs it, also has a capability to be used by the citizens. Co-locating in close to close school is ideal situation where you can have, me being a dead leader in my past life, excellent opportunity to just have dead beings, right? So during the day, because there's enough room in the building to do that. It does support disaster efforts that we originally planned. For a hundred and twenty five people in case of a disaster. And supports its high efficiency. And so the real number is the number we're going for is the eleven, eleven nine. And then Jeremy, you can speak to the interactive tax pay, we're looking at five hundred and thirty five, thirty five dollars a year on asset, assessed value of five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so the, the estimated cost here is around eleven point nine five hundred dollars, which is about ninety percent of what the original estimate was at thirty two point two dollars. So the taxpayer impact will, we redid the whole study, but the taxpayer has to press with you about ninety percent of what we talked about earlier. So there's a lot of, you know, timing and cadence and interest rate risk and all those things. But we're looking at, like Phil had said, an average peak of a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty five dollars per year on assessed value of five hundred thousand dollar home. Or for a home of assessed value of five hundred thousand dollars. One mini being factor from that is some general funding, we're looking at eight hundred and possible up to eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in congressionally directed spending from Congress and Attorney's Office. So bills have been marked up, it's going through the committee now and we'll expect it here sometime in spring on finalization of that. But once it gets to this point, it's been communicated to us that it's, it's a pretty solid possibility. So the debt, exclusive, the debt authorization would have to be agnostic towards that. It'll be overall not borrowed, it might be less eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Sorry, less how much?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so eleven point one million, it's really hoping. And then the, the, you know, the congressman advocated for the project, we asked for the, we asked for the full lot of board. The congressman got, got, got a great number for us, great percentage for us, he came to the town, this is the senior center understanding of this project. So he had a taxpayer impact, about take away about over thirty, twenty five dollars per five hundred thousand dollars. And that will last for the, for the life of the debt. So it would be thirty years from start to finish. The overall bonds will probably be around twenty eight years, but it's going to issue two years worth of notes to get us through the design and early construction phase. So we're not anything just on how we're going to be right away. It's a cost saving, I think, for the town, not borrow everything right away, so those peak amounts would be for about, about twenty eight years.
Thank you, any, any questions from the finance committee?
So Jeremy, have you, our previous finance director gave some charts showing sort of what our debt capacity is once we include this note in our, our plans. Has anything changed about, I can send you what she had sent me.
Yeah, so I've worked with our financial advisors, our gentleman, Ben. This lesson from Fozzy from, in Queensville, so I work with them kind of extensively. So our debt capacity is however much voters vote for, because this is all outside the levy. So we had debt matures at different intervals and fiscal twenty five had a, a large drop off in our, our outside the levy debt, or I think that what outside the levy debt is debt services this year. So we're keying off this off of fiscal twenty four to kind of make it kind of an apples to apples comparison to what the presentation was prior. And I think the timing of this project initially was to keep debt levels, tended to keep debt levels as consistent as possible. So we didn't have some troughs to it, or we had a consistent example, sort of thing.
So prior to this project, we had a certain debt capacity of X. After this, we were using, you know, favorable tools and approaches to raise that debt capacity in minimal amount, but also take advantage of the fact that different things drop off over time, right?
I was just trying to reach the word capacity, because our, our capacity is whatever voters allow us to do. So like our, our, our debt service amounts were, were, were relatively low. And then as we reached final maturity, the town has typically done a level debt service, not the principal. We see large chunks fall off right at the end rather than small amounts fall off. So in, in fiscal twenty five, we had a large chunk fall off. And this project should have been approved previously, we're going to have a similarly sized chunk placed into that. So that's why when we talk about what the ultimate above, use fiscal twenty four as a benchmark, and then so the ultimate debt service levels above that fiscal twenty four benchmark would actually be in fiscal twenty eight or twenty nine. And I, I can share that analysis with them down at that.
Yeah, if you can, I'm interested to see that. The other question that pops up a lot, address it here for the record, so the impact to operating costs to the town of now having to heat, cool, clean, maintain, run the building.
The analysis from the operational standpoint, uh, can it operate much of summer around seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars a year? And maybe, you know, talking to the agent, his impact reaching the police station. On the outside, it probably doubled into the new facility, that's the bread and butter of operating costs. There was a request for extended support from an official halftime administrator, taking a person from eighteen hours to thirty six, which is doubling that. That was not asked last year, maybe it will come back this year with that. And that needs to be approved regardless of what building we're in. And if you look at the, so the operation, when you try to get into that, but not FTE, maybe one person. But you know, right now, if you could get that other person in, we'd be able to see how we operate to keep, oh, three full time. I think.
And I think, I think a point that I take from the plans for this is that we don't expect to see an increased need for staffing due to the new facility. The increased need for staffing is because of the services. A lot of the senior center activities are staffed by volunteers and we expect that to continue. And I believe that they would not need to have both levels staff at all times, for example. So it's not necessarily, it's not anticipated that the building itself will need to, an increased need for staffing, at least for, for the building itself. Maintenance is a necessary question, so for the grounds. And then other operating costs, so this will be, you know, a, a green building, so that the operations cost for, for for heating and cooling are expected to be minimized, but it is a bigger building, so that it.
So the not zero.
Right.
So I have to know what the delta is from the current building, so that anybody has.
I think the delta based on square footage and size, looking at police station, I'd be comfortable saying doubling our current operating cost. Not sure about the inflational factors for two years from now, one fifty. The building is going to be sold. It's going to need to get an improved project, we're going to hear people after solar ramps and things to put solar on, which would make it even more efficient than what they have. So I'm comfortable saying double our current operational costs was the thing to build.
Yeah, I just want to clarify too, you're not saying doubling the total COA budget.
The sixteen thousand. I think it's seventeen or eighteen thousand, by the way.
Around forty.
Around forty, it's around twenty now, last year, it'll be around forty, within the building. Just based on the square footage educated, the discussion, anyone has a standard situation when you can't come to the station, a roll to the station. And then again, that other point, I think, is maybe you can set up a bad person now. So should we clap for that, I don't think there's.
That's a whole separate.
That's another discussion, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Jeremy, do you have anything to add about the anticipated operational costs?
Yeah, it, it will be more, of course. It will be more because there's more going, and there's more services, and there's more programs, and there's more citizens being served, and there's more departments in there. So yeah, it, it will be more. But I, I find it difficult to nail down what that anticipated cost would be without the help of an architect.
But when we, when we had this discussion during the design phase, the discussion before, it was estimated with the, with the new technology, even though there was a significant increase in square footage, that it would be less, less than twice what it costs currently to heat, heat and the question you were asking, which I think Mike, Mike, and I had, yes, to, to, well, the utilities and those, those changed to operate a bigger building, how much more does it cost?
Yeah, and I appreciate the evidence to go as green as possible, but it's not zero.
No, it's not zero.
Right, so this direct question is asked on the floor, it was asked last year.
Yep.
It will be asked again, and we should have a concise data driven answer to be able to provide it, so.
Is that something you can, we'll get some.
I will work during, on that condition.
He has, he has that number.
Calculated for the big footprint, so I think we should just make sure that.
And that's, and that's why I say when that question was, it was less, less than twice what the current building is.
Yeah.
So certainly a smaller.
Yeah.
But, but as far as.
Yeah, for my ability to make a recommendation, I am satisfied, but I think I, you know, if I was on the floor, I would want better details. Like I understand where we're going, I understand the difficulty of nailing down an exact number, knowing what it is today, knowing that, you know, twice as a, probably a pretty conservative estimate is great.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll, it, it's, it's in the details and we'll have that detail ready. So that we'll be able to answer that question.
I recommend two things, extrapolate from what we learned from the police station, as you've talked, Dave's been offering that, talk to the architect, those are your two points. You can stick with that, it's the best we could do.
Yeah, I think we do about air conditioning. Currently run window air conditions on on the building, I'm sure they're not.
And, and that's where, that's.
And we're going to have heat systems.
Heating of the current building is not efficient, we'll put it that way.
We can do it, I'll get those two back.
All I'm hearing is we need to have a concise answer on the floor when the question's asked.
Yeah, again, this isn't a difficult answer to come up with, it just takes some time.
Right.
So I would say that even if it's possible to get it sooner, that could potentially go on the website and we'll see if the layout.
Yeah, and I get that, you know, the number of programs changes, number of staffing, it's great to know that it's mostly staffed by volunteers, right? So, and all of those are super variable and we all know the variability of weather, but the variability of grass and you know, general building maintenance and heating and cooling, you know, those are all things that can be calculated based on historical weather numbers and efficiency ratings of all the equipment that is being put in the building, right? So just takes.
People need to understand that that's not, that the operational budget is not part of the cost of the building.
Yep, but you're asking to get it to approve, to spend more money.
I'm, I, I get it, I'm just saying that like the number should be clear and understandable, not just another number.
I think it is a good question. Also because, right, there are potential other demands on the budget, so. I mean, another question is, you know, where is, where potentially is the increase going to be funded from? So like, I mean, I know that's another question and maybe we'll, we'll get to some of that, I know. Maybe when we talk about free cash, we might have some ideas about some additional fund sources, I think, well, for example, you mentioned the campus, these have not been built into our budget yet.
So yeah, things like that kind of two or three times over. As we get into fiscal twenty six budget, I remember I had a great question the other day, what is, you know, with this, with these differences in expenditures and revenues that we saw in fiscal twenty five on a structural basis, what does that mean for fiscal twenty six? So as we get into fiscal twenty six budget discussions, that will be.
Are there other questions? I know, I know, the select board has had another presentation, but if there are other questions that have come up, it's a good opportunity to ask them, and then I guess there are additional finance committee questions about this project in particular.
The, the eighty six percent utilization is based off the viewpoint.
That's superficial, but you can do utilization, that's the new utilization. Forecast of advanced forecast, the number of advanced activities. And we did similar activities with the current fee. You know, so we're going, there that utilization is based off of what you're asking.
Alright, I am good with my questions. Anybody, anybody think I'm online with questions? Nick or Jack?
Nope.
Jack.
Okay, wrong, sorry. Great, thanks.
Okay, great, alright, thank you. So thank you so much, Kelly. Alright, let's see. Do we want to bring the word turn to the we want to do ARPA next since it is capital really good?
Yeah, sure.
Why don't we, we'll move on to item eight, which is the ARPA update?
Yeah, so. So this is a report on all of our ledger on what we spent on ARPA, so really what I highlight here is that of the initial appropriated, initial grant from the government, we have sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and seventy two cents on allocated funds. So it's just a reminder of some of the stuff that we have allocated funds for, water studies, complication classification, website redesign, concentrate organizational study, employee volunteer programs, police cruisers, fire engine, extraction tools, breathing air systems, rescue one replacement. What you see here in the first column is not the original allocation, that's what we started fiscal twenty five with, so that was what was left over from, from prior allocations. A number of things in highway, hot box replacement, dump truck, pickup truck. Prominence Street, Gullver has secondary allocation, if you all recall. So that went from thirty thousand dollars to a seventy five thousand dollar allocation, which took funds off of the general funds. The refacoon replacement, which we received this week at a number of lower than sixty thousand dollars, so as we close that out, I'll find an update next Wednesday. And then legacy senior center adaptive reuse study, town hall inpatient punch list, library catering, which we're actively preparing right now. And then that's, that's the end of it. So I have a, I have a proposal from, from a firm that I'd like to bring to the board next Wednesday. Details from them, but it's essentially a, some firm called Text My Gov. And it's a somewhat low barrier solution for folks to be able to get information now, so they can text the question while it's tracking. We, you know, they use their, their tools and our preloaded questions and, and it texts them that, download that, they also go to the websites. So I'll put together a lot more things than that, you can send out alerts, you can, you can do all sorts of things. It's really low tech and it's a few thousand dollars a year. And I'd like to roll it out with ARPA funds. And then if we only get ten people who use it, then we won't be sharing a fund, you know, two years, three, four. I think it's a good kind of test case. So all, they haven't gotten me the past year, the two year folder of the year half proposal yet, so we'll have to come back for tonight. But we have a meeting next week, so for that sixteen thousand four hundred and three dollars, I'll likely drink something around ten thousand dollars for this, for two years worth of this program. So it will get us in fiscal twenty five and all the way through fiscal. Through fiscal twenty five and all the way through fiscal twenty six, and then with a suggestion of the additional five thousand six hundred and fifty three dollars. Uh, but if members have something that they'd like to see proposed in contrast to that or additive to here, we can do that. Um, and then I will also have, I guess, a final number of leaf vacuum, which is under the amount that we talked about, or school that I talked about, reallocated, something else, and learning how we did the seventeen thousand dollars in the hot box.
The Legacy Center, reuse, adaptive reuse study, that's obviously pending, right? So is there a thought? Can we execute against that fast enough to contract it within here, if in fact the, the.
Yeah, uh, yes and yes.
That is such a question.
I just said, I thought we just had to allocate.
So yeah.
We actually have to contracts. Oh, that's what I was combining, okay.
Uh, so yeah, uh, architectural related services are exempt from thirty B, so we can reach out to somebody designing contract.
So it seems like that's the only thing that's really at risk there, aside from things that cost less than we assume, which is a good problem.
Yeah, which is great, same, we can allocate, and I have problems where others too on their way to kind of extend the useful life of these. Uh, but we can, because they have any lawful useful use, we can, so I would, yeah, we can. Put it all into something last week in December and do something we do on show. Well, I would send it to the beginning.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I don't have a pulse here, that's all, that's all.
Alright, and so we'll be discussing this again next week.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so then I think I would, it makes sense to return to the highway department MOA. From number six, since I believe it does, it is related to some of the, and the articles of the town meeting.
Yeah, so this was the last collective bargaining agreement that was unsettled through the town. Um, we went to one day with a mediator and, and settled after that day with not economic language changes, so there was, there was no material, no real. Economic impact to what we've talked about, we had shifted towards a, a four day work week, a pilot test for a four day week. Um, all year, that's what they already do during the summer, changed some language on what. Double time is in a snow emergency and changed the amount of time that folks can roll over on sick time, the number of days that they're allowed to carry. Um, which matches both our exempt personnel and other collective bargaining agreements, so highway was twenty days behind, and now most people are allowed to carry over on sick time. Um, and then the rest of the terms are consistent economically with the other events and a four percent. Cola in year one, a three percent cola in year two, and then the one additive measure was, there's one member of the unit who's on call. Twenty four seven for one week, and respond within thirty minutes, and they get a one hundred dollar stipend for that week that they're on call. Um, we up that stipend by one hundred dollars, so it's a, one person gets it at a time, so it's an additive cost to the town overall of five thousand two. I'll remind the board that these contracts were executed on a two year deal with the assumption that we were going to do a compensation and classification study in advance of the expiration of these contracts. And would then not necessarily apply the same. Cola to every unit, we would be informed by the compensation classification study, and there would be, you know, disparate impacts of that study in consequence. And that's a study that this board has allocated money for out of ARPA, we've signed a contract and we're actively moving away of that.
It's one of the, the statement of colas not necessarily, aren't we really saying we might adjust pay scales to be competitive?
That's a better way to, to say, colas will be the same, there will be market adjustments. Colas will be the same. Uh, but we will make market adjustments, so yes, that's a better way.
Are there questions about this, I know.
I can deal with the thing I want to bring up, was the double time, it was not just for snowing, it was double time. They all.
So that's at midnight.
It's from midnight to six thirty in the year, so you have to put in between those hours, it's double.
Yeah.
So that's like the bridge washes out and you pull people in.
I said it's.
I said it, I was in ed, it was past tense, sorry, past tense.
Thank you. Uh, other, other questions about this? Is this ready for us to sign tonight? Make sure to do that before we leave tonight.
So the, yes, the, um, the union ratified and signed it.
Okay, excellent.
We need to vote, yeah.
So yes, yes.
I move to approve the highway department MOA.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Emotion passes, so wonderful, now, we will, we will all sign that before we leave tonight, so.
Yep.
Great news, thank you for all, all the work to all of you who participated in those negotiations. Really pleased that we've come to this and, yeah, great news. Alright, so on to. Believe we're on to the, um, item nine, finalize the special town meeting warrant, unless there is something else that it seems would be good to for us before we start in our. Okay, so let's, let's do that.
So, uh, it's the draft warrant, special town meeting or special town meeting warrant. Once again, seven PM, um, at the Mississippi middle school on November eighth. I'm going to be, um. So I'll flip between two, um. Two versions here, so we can talk about the specifics that are in the, in the warrant and the numbers that are behind it, so. Uh, the first is a new free cash to pay for the current year. And, yeah, so the prior year bills we have, our list is here. This is, so I want to reiterate, this is something that happens every year in our municipality for some, as many different bills as there are, there's probably not many different reasons why they weren't able to be paid. Um, so as long as we have a bill in hand by July fifteenth, we can encumber those funds, and as long as we get the bill. September first, September thirty, but as long, as long as we get the bill and pay against, I'm like, don't be this, we, we have the encumber funds. Um, these were bills that we did not get by July fifteenth, so we weren't able to create an encumbrance, but they are of the, um. They're an expense of the prior fiscal year, so the thought being, or the idea being is. We wanted to pay these was unexpendable in fiscal twenty four, it fell through, so it's due to free cash, um, in ways that it shouldn't have, it shouldn't have paid at that, so now we're using that money in free cash to pay these bills in fiscal twenty five. Uh, like I said, each has individual reasons, um. The, uh, the overarching thing is our town's executive system left in the spring, we were to inter town administrators, there was actually, we went into whether there was not interim town administrator. The finance director left the first week of the fiscal year, the assistant treasurer collector then became the interim treasurer collector, and there was no hint there, and ends up doing a lot of these payables. Um, so for a host of reasons, some of you think about. Also, I received an additional bill today, silver staples at three hundred and forty nine dollars give or take, so this would be more like thirteen thousand, um, nine hundred dollars. Uh, and some of the larger ones here, community solar, that was being sent to employees who only works here, and we pay kind of five or six right away at the end of the year, and so we missed this one. Uh, five thousand dollars, that's for our town accountant, it's a monthly bill, and slightly. And Murphy Estes Jr. and Lehane, that's our town council, and they shouldn't be offended by these things, because everybody does it, law firms are notoriously difficult at getting their bills out on time. Um, so often what we try to do is get a half bill for June, to get us your bill through June fifteenth, uh, so we can minimize that number, so we'll try to do that next year. Uh, so I sent this to FinCom yesterday, hold me to that, next year's number should be less than thirteen thousand. That's what we're out of those prior year.
Can, can you say what community solar is, so you, you mentioned that there was some issue with the building, but what, what actually is that for?
So we receive, we receive a utility credit for solar infrastructure on our accounts, and then the owners of that solar array, then they lost for. I think it's ninety percent, it's, it's a percentage of what we get, so the entire program is a net positive for the town.
Right.
But we get the in and then we have the resulting out, so revenues and expenditures are directly aligned.
Okay.
Um, but just the titles.
Thank you, I was just, I was surprised, surprised to see that as an expenditure, I know that it's, you know, a revenue source.
Yes, so, so something like, you know, probably three thousand seven hundred dollars came in.
Right.
Three thousand four, almost whatever was came in.
Okay.
Were made to this.
Okay.
So there's a lot.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions about?
I'll talk about kind of the next during concert, so I don't have to switch back and forth between windows and. So, um, raise inappropriate money into the stabilization account, to the capital expenditure accounts, which is the hundred thousand dollar cap that we had talked about prior, into the other post employment benefit trusts. So, um, we'll first talk about the big one, first talk about stabilization, so stabilization, this is our rainy day fund, this is our savings account, this is what, um, you know, what resists toward new towns. So the way you think about your stabilization is not as a gross number, right, because our stabilization versus Franklin stabilization, the number doesn't really matter, what matters is the percentage of your general fund. Um, so right now, our fiscal twenty five budget has passed, it was just shy of twenty four million dollars, our stabilization, when I made this chart, because it increases interest every. Uh, one point one million, um, which is a four point seven six percent. Um, the proposed contribution that I have here, which is the part that's up for debate with the boards, is five hundred thousand dollars, which would bring us to one point six million dollars. There are other free cash appropriations here, um, serious. That would increase the fiscal twenty five budget, so the huge in our fund would be this number, should all be, so with the one point six million over that number brings us to six point seven seven percent. It's important to think about stabilization as, um, as a percent, like I said, and this is my little commentary, or four percent is a, is, is kind of thin, um, in terms of. What communities across the Commonwealth give as stabilization, and I think it's important to think about our stabilization in the context of Massachusetts municipalities, because our. Structure, our economic structure is the same, if we look at a Texas school district, what they hold, that's not useful for us. Um, so a lot of communities will have something that says, you know, community stabilization at a level no less than last year, until we reach a level of five percent, and. Once we reach five percent, you have to appropriate that out, you know, some of the communities have, each being a five, nine percent. Um, so I think about sixty eight percent is a, is a healthy range, I wouldn't want to be as prescriptive as saying everything over five percent has to come out, I like giving us a buffer. Um, so that, like I said, that half a million dollars brings us to a six point seven seven percent. And what that means is each year, you know, now it's not just seven, forget it, each year, again, you need to appropriate into stabilization to keep that percentage after general fund. Uh, so with such a healthy amount of free cash this year, I think setting aside, you know, a fifth of it into your stabilization. Um, is a really kind of sound, long range financial management process.
I mean, that five percent used to be our, our floor, we tried to get, we worked to get it, and we crossed five percent a few years ago, and we were like.
And now, now because the contributions have ended up with the growth.
So the, the free cash additions to budget, is that just the right size in the budget based on your analysis, free cash?
No, that will happen in twenty six, this is things that this board has talked about, increasing income reserves, building payments accounts, and then. Funding CDs and contracts. Um, the, the next one was capital stabilization, which I don't have a tab on here, well, for a hundred thousand dollars, which is the next one of the social apps. In the balance somewhere in there, somewhere there's about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and twelve, you know, thousand dollars, um, and if you recall, we talked about probably the street over, I had. Possibly that as a possible funding source to bring down the overall bargain, so that's discussion for me for today, what we want to use the capital for, in the same way, capital expenditure can fall, or the same way that. Stabilization is a good, long term, sound financial practice, I think, contributing the statutory max to this stabilization account here, in the position to which it's also.
I mean, to that point, when you think about the program update that was given, the biggest unknown right now, I'm trying to get our P and P together, there's some understanding, what is the. Uh, funding source of perpetuity for capital, right, so ARPA was a gift, we're not going to see that gift again. Um, but you know, this is clearly a small step, we actually don't get this broadly than just a hundred thousand dollars a year, given the amount of capital. Well, that we have in queue.
So I, I think what you can even do, that hundred thousand dollars is not leveraged, you know, you can leverage a hundred thousand dollars, put. You know, three million, four million dollars worth of debt inside of the general fund, use that hundred thousand dollars to pay that debt each year, and then you're leveraging that. That's it. Um, so the next appropriation to, since in stabilizations of trust plays OPEC, so other post employment benefits, so these are retiree healthcare costs, so the town share of healthcare premiums in advance of Medicare age or on Medicare supplement. For its retirees, uh, the, um, this is called, what I highlighted here is called a, a net liability, so. Gatsby, the Government Accountability Standards Board, has treated OPEC similar to pensions, where you have a liability, all of your future costs, you have your future deposition, all the money you have saved for it, and then your net liability. For the cost measurement we have, yes, that's a few thirty, five million dollars, a net position of a hundred and sixty five thousand. Since contributed money, um, now we have, or nine thirty, so we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so a fifty thousand dollar increase would be increasing to OPEC trust by, by twenty five percent. This is an unfathomably large liability for every municipality that tackles it, the idea being you create a trust that then throws off enough to benefit the trust at some point where, because right now, we're paying these OPEC. Payments, but we're doing it through PEGO, which is part of the budget, the idea being you build up this nest egg and then you no longer have to use. PEGO for it, you can use this for it, and then should some other outside shop happen, you can draw it down on this and you can fund your reliability in the same way the pension funds. Um, so at the end of fiscal twenty three, three and a third percent funded, um, so with some extrapolation. Here, we get some four percent.
Are we trying to target something specifically, or it's just about reducing stress?
That would be my, my question, because traditionally. The nu- the number we put in there was something that was suggesting to us to put in there is a good, a tent. To, to keep our bond rating or different, different issues stable, so. Is, is there any guidance that you've taken externally to depict that number, or?
So the last time I talked to a bond rating agency, they were concerned with some about it, and because it's so, so new, Gatsby seventy five, it's now, you know, there's only. Three or four financial statements, years worth of financial statements that have this, um. There's.
That have, have.
Have, um, your OPEC liability stated in your financial statements, so prior to.
Oh, so prior to that, it was never on.
Prior to twenty two.
And what, 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 uh. Caused that to be listed there when it wasn't before?
Uh, it's called Gatsby statements.
Okay, so it's, so it was a change in requirements, okay.
So, uh, just throwing around that, municipality, they're gonna have terribly funded OPEC liability, this is not something this company thought about. Um, in earnest before I, before yesterday, so from, that kind of real politic, what bond rating agencies think about it, they want you to continue to chip away at it and, you know. Contribute as much this year as you did last year, sort of thing, um, and try to keep up with your, with your overall growth of your liability, so. This is not something that the, that the board and the budget is going to benefit from in the next ten or fifteen years, but if you don't do it now, that will be thirty years.
Did we put, did we put anything in OPEC last year?
Yeah.
It's like five thousand, right? It's like five thousand, right? It was a very small number.
It was twenty.
Was it twenty five? So it's two years. Okay.
But yeah, like I said, this is continuing to mention, this is the thing that's, uh, um, adding more, will increase the biggest, the best to have and sound on my end, I think, but it's not like the. Exciting investments used in, you know, truckers, many grants, but bit more.
It's one of those you look at, you're, what's the point?
But they, but.
Yeah.
The, the good answer is that, you know, they're telling us, this is what you need to do. So we do what we're told to do.
Ideally, if we, if somehow we weren't financially solvent, then employees would still be paid retired.
Yeah. So this is, yeah, this is not, this is not retirement. This is, this is, um. The, the portion of our premium of our healthcare premiums. This is separate from the Western County contributor.
And keep, keep in mind that, that something that we've always done is pay, uh, seventy five percent of our retirees. OPEB. Whereas they're only statutorily required to pay fifty percent.
Okay.
And we're paying the, the yearly cost of our. And then you're contributing this to the trust. So in terms of economic shock, you can continue to pay yearly costs and stop the trust payments. And that's. You're not obligated. Trust payments can be, they're obligated. So if, if there was two hundred thousand dollars in free cash, oh, maybe I can give this.
We'd been there before.
All right. So, uh, I thought it was kind of boring to, to session ones. So, um, in, um, in the fiscal twenty five budget, it was contemplated for, um. Non-union personnel at a two percent. I was here for this, so. Two percent cola, um, and then the reserve for negotiation for union positions approximated what seems like about a two percent. After we got into negotiations with those non-union and union personnel and looked at what inflation is in the world, the cost of the adjustment of two percent. Um, was not kind of tenable and wouldn't get to town anywhere. Um, in addition, um, passing, um. Union units to not take the market adjustment we talked about before and ask, you know, give us time to do this study with the market adjustment at the end. Um, to bridge that gap, um, the approach was a four percent, three percent. I say, I start all that here with the town clerk salary, because the number that here's the, the, instead of going to two percent cola for the town clerk at annual town meeting. Um, something like a point, two percent or point oh five percent cola was voted for the town clerk. So town clerk's not essentially got no cola fiscal twenty five. And as healthcare premiums went up, the town clerk's take home salary actually went down in fiscal twenty five. This article asked to set the town clerk salary at a four percent cola from fiscal twenty four to fiscal twenty five, consistent with the other, um, units there.
The. So this essentially fixes the mistake, the oversight.
So this is, I want to speak for your, your consensus.
Yeah, go for it. He's going to see where your big jobs.
So, so the comments from, from FinCon were, so they asked for a couple of things and how this was presented, which I didn't say you guys split up the, the reserve in a different way, I split the articles in a different way. FinCon had asked for two articles, uh, one to set the town clerk salary at two percent that was budgeted. Um, so, um, yeah, you, you know, if you look at the town clerk department salary line, budget number there, it's a two percent cola. But the number in the annual town meeting was lower than that, it was not. Um, and then a second article that says, all right, let's do that additional two percent, um, on top of. I put it together as the four percent altogether. It's a select board sponsored article. And it's the policy of the select board that non-union and union personals have a four percent cola in fiscal twenty five. So that's why it's here in, in one article, less than four percent. So.
Yeah. So the concern was, uh, we go to town meeting and we vote to recommend, uh, a certain salary. And essentially that doesn't really mean anything. So the discussions of where the extra two percent came from, you know, there were, there was no discussion with us. Like I, I don't know what we, we end up recommending, end up recommending something that doesn't end up being up at the end of the day. So it has nothing to do whether the four percent is warranted or not, or if we, would we, or would we support that or not? It's more about how are we processing what we're supposed to be recommending to the townspeople? When the number that we presented and recommended is not the actual limit.
So the, the contracts, the CBA's, the individual contracts, um, need to be ratified and funded by town meeting. Um, so the, you know, side by side with them, contracts aren't, you know, fully funded and operational until town meeting. So kind of this, this is the mechanism.
I, I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying. The budget had two percent for the town clerk, but she has not received two percent as management this fiscal year, right?
Yeah.
So you're saying, well, can we just fix the mistake? And if our policy, the board's policy is to give non-union the same colas as union through CBA negotiations. You should see an adjustment to the town clerk for additional two percent. That's what I'm hearing, right? That's what you want to see as a practice.
Oh, although the town clerk as an elected position, it has to be voted on at town?
No, I'm just, I, 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 what I'm hearing is there's sort of like, we budge, we approve two percent of the town clerk. She has not received.
Oh, yeah, totally. Like, right. Fix the problem.
Yeah. And then that, now, then talk about adjustments based on making everyone whole across town operations.
What is that? Is that whole number? How, how do we get to that delta between the approval and what whole is and where it comes involved?
Yeah, there's our involvement in that process.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's the, what do we recommend to the town?
Right.
So.
Well, I mean, in terms of whether, who, whether you recommend it to the town or not, absolutely, that's on your plate. How we get there in terms of just it's standing, it's been standing policy. From, from, you know, contractual negotiation standpoint, once we settle with our community, yeah, collective bargaining agreements.
Yep.
We do go back to non-union to make sure colas are equal across the board. That you can weigh in on that policy as, as enacted, right?
Yeah. Is that an official policy or is that just how we've always done it?
Well, every policy that's out there is how we've always done it. And then there's no, I mean, well, I think maybe we add to the.
That, that's.
Policy at board, but I mean.
I think the thought is to keep, to keep everyone whole into that bad blood.
Even not whole.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Yep, uh, totally understand the intent. It's more of the, I don't know what we end up recommending to the townspeople because.
I'm lucky you're splitting it up, like, like you go up or down.
My, my understanding was that when we had this discussion last year, before the annual town meeting. That was the understanding and that was communicated. The issue was that what was discussed and intended was not put into the budget and voted on the floor. So that, because those salaries, um, for the, at the annual town meeting, were supposed to have that in it.
Not because that was great, because we hadn't gotten it. Again, this is a timing issue.
Well, it was, but it was, but it was, but it was, but it was in reserve for negotiations with that, that understanding.
Reserve's a two percent. We exceeded that reserve. So we do this in the special time meeting quite a bit, because often the contracts settle after town, the, the annual. We adjust salaries in November quite a bit.
Yeah.
So I understand what you're saying. And if you want, what I'm hearing is that FinCon would like the opportunity to do an up or down recommendation on. Even the adjustment to the previous budget in July.
Yeah.
Fair?
Yeah.
And that's like a what?
But this is the way, but the answer person, this is the way we've always done it. And.
Fortune.
This isn't the first time. It's, it's typical that we always go back to.
Yeah, well, I've third run at the rodeo and finally.
Yeah.
I learned some things, right? So.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, the first time we show up through, because I've been through a contract expiration. So, um, this is where.
That's fair.
We'd like to be part of those.
Yeah, so it's not.
So.
Um, if this is the way we've always done it, where have we funded it before and why are we funding it out of free cash?
It's been a free cash.
Yes.
Free to it.
Yeah, free cash at the special town meeting in the fall, once we certify free cash.
And what I, what I try to.
And it's for anything that we didn't have, because normally when we put money at the annual for reserve for salary negotiations. Is to cover that. And if, if for some reason ultimately negotiations, um, with the unions require that we pay more than what we have reserved. Um, at the annual, that's when we backfill it in the fall at the special.
So I will go through this in a little bit, next this feature. I just want to make sure everyone's understanding of magnitude. So. There was a hundred and ten thousand dollars in reserve for negotiation appropriated in the fiscal twenty five. Um, I went and I speeded that across departments and I said, everyone gets a fourth point that makes two percent because of some, um, ego sacrifices in, in personnel. Really, we're only spending eighty one thousand dollars worth of that hundred and ten to, to, um, two or two percent. So there's twenty eight thousand, twenty nine thousand dollars that's not being spent. It's getting kept there. And the free cash appropriation for that additional two percent is equal to about seventy six thousand dollars. So we're talking about an additional seventy six thousand dollars to fund this additional two percent. And what I was trying to convey a handful of times is that we have a structural surplus between revenues and expenditures, the way the fiscal twenty five fluctuates percentage. So this is seventy six thousand dollars, um, is easily kind of explainable in either a local receipt, local receipt piece. Or in a, in a, you know, misappropriated or misappropriated, misaligned and ironic.
So, so this is, uh, this is Nick. My concern is around kind of transparency, um, as we're. Representing what the increases are for town elected employees or employees at the annual town meeting. So when we get up and we say that we're increasing a salary by two percent. That isn't fully accurate. It's.
It is.
It's at least two percent, possibly higher. And I'm not sure we're being clear in communicating that to the townspeople when they're voting on this.
I mean, it's certainly not going to be two percent. Two percent would be the ceiling that's anticipated at the time, which is what the appropriation ask is for. And then the transparency piece is saying, came back now, here's the agreements. We're asking for the additional appropriation to implement these improvements. And if these, and then if we don't get the appropriation and the ratification from the legislative body, the town meeting at this point. Um, then these contracts are null and void. We go back to the concrete, we go back to the bargaining table.
I would say at the point of the annual town meeting, it was true and accurate in terms of a two percent increase. Because we did not know what the final number would be, which is why every, every, usually they're three-year contracts, these are two-year contracts this time around. But every time we go into negotiations, the fall after we settle, if we, if we don't close before the annual, we do do an adjustment if we have to. So it's not. It's not uncommon. It is accurate where we did it, 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 to your point, we can explain it accurately. The only difference here is we have a, oops, we never gave the town clerk her two percent.
Yeah.
So I think it's fair to split that up if we need to.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent agree. We should fix the mistake that we made around the two percent. My concern is that we're treating the union and non-union employees the same and not being transparent. That non-union employees will receive basically the same negotiated deal that the union employees are getting. That is not clear.
Not clear to who? You mean to you at this point? Cause we did that, cause we've done that in the past when you were on the committee. And it was what it came down to is when we voted at the annual. That's where we were at, but we were still in negotiations with the union. And then we've always gone back, we've always gone back to give the basically management and non-union the same raises. That we've negotiated to the, to the union. We just didn't have it done at that point. And we would try to estimate it. And put it into reserve for salary negotiations, which would be appropriated, but at this point it wasn't enough.
I, I understand the point they made, except that the question of what the salaries are for the union and the non-union personnel in terms of going forward. The appropriate time to address that is at special town meeting. Up until now, it's all been accurate. No one has misled anyone and we need to go to the floor. And we're going to vote on each one of these items to say, based on past practice. That we've negotiated these contracts with their collective bargaining and what we do as a practice is whatever the colas are, the, the contracts negotiate. We think it's fair to make sure that the whole is the same. Personnel. You now, you now have a chance to vote it up or down, people of men.
Yeah.
And all of these are items at select board. These, these agreements have come to select board, been discussed, voted on in open session, including. Individual contracts for non-union folks. And it's been, at least in my handful of months here, very clearly communicated by the select board to whoever's watching in open session. About this approach on four-three compensation classification, keeping union pays with nine.
Yeah, we talked in steps.
Yeah. So it's, I, the transparency piece, we, we've been super, I think the board has been super transparent on its process. And now we're going through the appropriate process of having the legislative body then fund these through, again, a very democratic and transparent process.
And it's then we get funded, we go back and we draw.
I guess, and my question for Nick is, do you see additional ways in which you would like to see us, uh, be more transparent in the future? Are there discussion points you would like to bring to the, you know, the annual town meeting when we're, especially the years that we're going into negotiation to make this clear with that? That?
I, I think as part of the discussion that we have around non-union employees. That we indicate that we're budgeting for two percent with the idea that we will quote true up. Uh, based on the negotiations with union employees.
I would not want to say that because what if we negotiate a two percent or a one percent with unions, right? I mean, I, you, you, I think we want, we, we need to speak to what we know as fact at the time. And we come back in the fall, if we have to true up and we give them an opportunity to say, this is what we think is the right direction. It's your choice whether or not you fund these changes now.
Right.
And it's for both, uh, union and non-union, because it's not, none of this gets.
Yeah.
Goes through without the town voting.
Yeah.
So I would suggest as, as our chair, that we have two articles, one to fix the problem or the mistake that, that was made. And the second one to add two percent to the, um, to the existing salary.
I'd say we just do it.
For, for the town clerk in particular?
Yeah, so this is, this is like.
There was a mistake made that we need to fix.
Right, right. So I mean, right, there are the two issues with the town clerk, but I think the. The, uh, elected official salaries need to be specifically voted on, whereas I think the other ones can be locked together. So, right.
So there's a, there's a vote to, uh, appropriate, you know, twenty seven thousand dollars in free cash to police salaries. And that is implicitly funding the police CBA as well as those these, these individual contracts. You don't ask town meeting to say, please, would you decide that or? That's, that's on the policy side and this is on the appropriation side, so back that up. Um, but yeah, if, if the board wants to split Article five out into, you know, into two, um.
I'm okay with that. Um, the only concern that I have is that it makes it distorted on the floor of the board's potential.
And if they both pass, what, when this is our actual salary? So if it passes and say, set the calorie compensation, the town clerk gets seventy one thousand dollars and change, yes. And then set the compensation of the town clerk for seventy two thousand dollars and change, yes. Which one is now for salary?
I'm sorry?
Which one is then their salary? We have successive articles that say, if they both pass.
Yeah, the higher, the higher of the two.
And the thing why, you, they both, they both should be effective July one, because it should be the standard.
Or I guess just put, um.
I, I'm wondering if we can do one article with, but the explanation within the motion. What we're doing here for the town clerk salary is that two percent of this appropriation was appropriate. We never adjusted her salary to meet the appropriation we made, voted on in the spring. That's, that's one thing. The balance of this dollar you're appropriating has to do, and we'll talk more about when we get to these other line items further. Is to adjust per cola, as we do with all non-union employees. To be matched the cola being negotiated through the collective bargaining groups across the different unions.
I, uh, I don't want to put the total number that's listed here at risk. Um, I'd rather, but I do want to make sure we're giving transparency. So I, I'd be liable to not have a separate one as long as we, highly, that is two steps.
Would it make sense to bring the other article forward so that that four percent? Is addressed before we get to the town clerk salary? Cause it seems like there's a lot of discussion here because it's like, why is that? Four percent? Because I think if we shift the order, it might help, once we've established that this has been, um.
We own the service if she sees her item going down.
Well, I think, because, because I think since it's the pressure of all of that question about why for a percent or is. Well, because, because I think since it's the pressure of all of that question about why from the sample risk is coming from on this one.
Yeah.
And that's not.
Article.
Yeah.
Not, not only is it on her, there's this two-step process which we wouldn't have expected to see. We don't expect to see a, 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 a fix of anything with how many, you know, every year.
Right.
So I.
I, I think that's a great.
Yeah, I, I think so too. And discuss this before, if we, if it fails elsewhere, right, the um, you can think of.
Well, yeah, my suggestion is that we do the one article, but have the explanation of the, of, of what, what that, what the increase comes from, where it comes from in the two different places. So it is transparent, but there's still one article.
But you should reorder, do the, the other ones first, so that we can clarify. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think if you do the. Yeah.
After that.
Yes, if you increase the, it would be because reserves, you explain it, but yeah, I, I think you better, you better the other way around. We're putting the, the, the cola up front and then go back in a subsequent, fix the, fix the mistake.
You won't do that. All right, Article six, this is the uh, um uh, approval of the debt exclusion. Um, so the difference between the annual town meeting is that there is no legal language that says contingent upon a ballot measure. Twenty, um, that's a note from council. Um, this occurs after the ballot measure. Um, so there will be so there'll be strategizing, strategizing um, from the board on how it all goes on the fifth. Uh, but that's kind of a G D A, but this is a very prescriptive language on what we can do. For debt exclusion. I will say, this is one thing we didn't talk about before, applicable for the received by the town. Um, to, to pay bracket costs. So this is part of the municipal modernization act and it's not always been part of um, what you can do, so the premium is, um, underwriters will page you for the privilege of buying your bonds, essentially. And out of that premium, we pay our financial advisor, our local council. And then there are, there's often times, um, at least in a competitive market, and that's definitely a plus community that often is, um, there's a balance of over, and we can apply that to the project. Um, and then that reduces our overall amount, overall amount of the fee. So when we sell into the debt capital markets at a competitive time as a premium credit, uh, or as a, as a, as a highly rated credit, we get a premium from our rights. So that's just what this, this line creates. And that's how we pay, that's how we pay everyone associated with this. You won't be able to look at our ledger and say, well, so we paid a lot for our own council. It's not going to be in there, it's like, they don't. Um, so the town votes accept provisions of general law thirty nine, section twenty three D. Um, so this is, uh, was the lander who listened here and the town council removed the actual language from the article. Um, what this says, we've discussed that somewhere, if, um, refers to folks who are, um, voting on a public hearing, if they did not um, attend the first part of a continued public hearing, but attended the later part, if they attest that they watched the video or read the minutes of the first part of the meeting, their, or first part of the hearing, they are allowed to vote on the outcome of the hearing. I think it's a, it says, but we'll, um, but we'll need to adopt this MGL, otherwise folks who missed the first part of a public hearing can't vote. Sorry. These next two are sponsored by the board assessors. Um, they're, um, part of the, the most recently signed budget, um, which by veterans tax evasion and then a coal, a coal increase on the veterans tax evasion and, and additional exemption for veterans. So these were submitted by all the successors. And just kind of wordsmithed from the first sentence by a town council, the rest is, is. Um, this needs to be changed after, uh, a vote this week. So, um, both of these are, um, are trail easements. They did vote or they? In, in last week, I'm sorry, last week. Yeah, so these are trail easements. Um, on two pieces of, um, town land, there is no, um, no financial implication to the town under these, it links trails together. Um, I encourage you to watch the, the conservation commission meeting. Um, there was some question as to why, why it was coming out now and why the conservation agent was asking them to sponsor it. Um, I asked the conservation agent to bring it to the conservation commission. Um, there are CRs on this land, so it's under the purview of the conservation commission and, um, having them sponsor these easements was um, seen the most appropriate way. Um, and it was brought to them at this time because that's when we have documentation. So these two are, um, planning board, so, um, I said this language, uh, once I got back from town council, I suggested to share the planning board. Just got today, so it's here back, but it's town plan, Jack concert approved it as well. Um, so this is, um, the accessory to one, yes, it's the law recommendation coming out of the zoning bylaw review committee for a special town meeting that, um, is also on. And if you want to talk a little bit about this, this thing or something?
Yeah, yes, uh, this is actually a mandate coming down from the states. These will be allowed by, you know, within residential zones in Massachusetts. Um, but you are also allowed to create your own. There's some options that you can take such as restricting them for short-term rentals and things like that. So we've, uh, created a, a accessory to our bylaw that is tailored to that. Will bring some to comply also with the state rules.
Great. And for my other state rules, um, restrict them at nine hundred square feet or half the size of the primary dwelling unit, whatever's less. So we're, we're not talking about.
Yeah, these are clearly should work.
First house was under nine.
Um, all right. So now we're going to get into a number of the, to see if the town will raise the appropriate annual transfer. Um, so these are free cash, um, cash. So I'm going to bring back my free cash.
Yeah.
Um, so the yellow stuff is salaries. Um, the, I'm going to do this as we go through them, as we, so we have some sort of, these are ones we've spoken about already. Um, so, uh, these are in different orders. Um, or they're split out in the warrant, you can see there the article number. And as we talked about flipping around with the town clerk salaries, there are others, this will change a little bit. But the, the, um, it just won't. So we have two, we have three up here for highway. So, um, we have the highway surveyor here to answer questions. Um, actually four here for highway, sorry, number nineteen is also highway. So we have a street sweeper, uh, Providence Street, uh, that's called repair. Uh, supplement to a road appropriation and alley storage facility. So this is one of the other things, after talking with FinCom, I split these out to individual articles rather than kind of lumping them dramatically together. Um, so hopefully to help rebuilding. Um, the Providence Street, oh, um, John, do you want to join us from here, talk about a couple of things? The, the street sweeper, the, the one that had, town has appropriated the money, uh, previously to fix the nineteen fifty's era machine.
That was the week.
That was the B factors.
The sweeper, two thousand and six, was used in two thousand and twelve. And we dropped major repairs on that since two thousand and twelve, twenty five thousand dollars. Minor repairs in house to keep it on the road. Don't even know.
I think that at least half the time I'm busy, I'm a part of that thing, it's been all taken apart with some working while I was there.
And I, I will remind everyone that as part of our stormwater permit, we're required to sweep our streets twice per year. Um, and that is increasingly difficult during this. Cannot possibly.
Does our, like, uh, stormwater, uh, costs for cleaning out the, the systems go up because we don't? Like, do they do it by bulk?
Done anything about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
When we talk to Time Bond, who are affected with a stormwater permitting through, it's always flagged on the report.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so those things are connected.
Once a year.
Yeah.
So this is in the same losing contingency. Initially, when I, um, we put together our initial capital, um, also through that, we're, we're this. Um, we're working out for both the last year that had, um, a year long lead time. Um, we actually have been told that's shortened into the, the four to six month range. Um, so we talked about timing, FinCom expressed some, some members of FinCom expressed some reservation about having large appropriation of special town meeting as opposed to annual town meeting based upon perceived attendance, special town meeting as a higher than the town meeting. Uh, both iterations have the same legal appropriation, which everybody recognizes it was a preference. Um, with the four month lead time, a special town meeting appropriation allows this possibly be in service, like in this service for our spring streets.
And I will also add that, uh, in talking to the salesman that I've been dealing with, he said if we purchase after January first, the price goes up. So the other question that came up, uh, at the FinCom meeting was about, um, contracting this, as far as I've been able to tell, there's no company around here that has been specifically contracted on street sweeping. We spend at minimum two months in the springtime sweeping all the roads. And then throughout the remainder of the year, there's, uh, chemical spills, material in the road, we have to go and clean it up. This is a little more difficult when you have somebody that's contracted. As far as renting a machine, we're looking at three hundred and sixty five dollars a day.
And it's, it's also hazardous because when, when a wreck happens and they put speedy dry and sand down on the roadway, the expectation is that, and to think the tow people are just going to be able to sweep it up. It's, it, it, it becomes, becomes a hazard. And I can, I, I'll tell you what. Uh, the, the first crash that I ever investigated and mended back in the nineteen eighties, um, there was somebody who was on a motorcycle and they actually lost their thumb because there was sand on the roadway that had never been cleaned up from the wintertime. That actually was the cause of the crash and it, it was a significant, it was, it's problematic. So it's, it's kind of, to, to me in particular, um, th- this is, this is the way, this is the way we need to do this and it's exigent. So.
Y'all, you know, things happen, we've been out that street. Try and get somebody on contract. And there's a lot of time, he's going to be. We're going to get to topics that popped up here.
Oh, it's great, but it's great to bring it up.
The following, because you said it's tough to find somebody that is contracts just street sweeping. So there's other contractual ranges, street sweeping, what's, is that you're aware of?
I looked into other funding for other contractual things. And, but I mean, like, catch facing contract, they're not getting the streets. Specialized things they do.
Could be an option. Just saying.
But the flexibility to, 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 um, for us, by the way, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, some members of FinCom have experience in construction and have expressed, uh, opinions that, uh, there are services available. Um, so would like to get more details about what investigations have been done uh, in order to possibly find a different way that doesn't require us to, you know, spend the money on a, on a new street, new street sweeper. I also think that our conversation last night, we were confusing the money invested previous fiscal year of leaf vacuum.
Right.
If you didn't invest in a sweeper last year, it was a five thousand dollar pair that got us another year.
Yeah, did the salesman that's pushing you to close on this saying after January one, the price goes up, which I think is an interesting tactic? Did he say by how much? Like, did he say it's going to be like a ten percent?
Three to five percent.
And then the question might be, is three to five percent worth paying to do more detailed investigation with this to the spring?
What, I mean, what would that mean for the spring of the, even our brand?
Because we get the application, or the corporation May, and we'll purchase until September.
That's another year.
Assuming the summer being.
And I, and I see the issue again of if we need the street sweeper to, to clean up some kind of a, some kind of a specific mess and we can't do it.
So we don't have a working street sweeper right now.
We do.
We do.
Having working streets.
But it's not.
Like, like Brandon just said.
Yeah.
At times when he's been down there, it's been bull.
It's not reliable.
Because it's not reliable.
It's not reliable, but it's working. Just saying, sometimes, sometimes.
Is, is the, so assuming that we get a new street sweeper, is the old one something that we could sell, trade in?
Trade in this part.
So. Do we know, do we know what the value is of?
I can tell you that we purchased it in two thousand and twelve, we paid fifteen thousand dollars.
Hmm, so we got our money out of it.
So, but this, this is the thing, I, I think, when I'm, the only reason I ask, people expect us to do, do diligence. So from procurement standpoint, the question is, I would say, have we looked at X, Y, and Z? Are we looking at regional services, I mean, contractual services, these should be all questions we have answered. I mean, this is actually, this, this item was in the program for coming after the twenty six or seven, yes, it's not new. I'm not saying we don't, but I think this, kind of like the capital planning in general, these are questions we're going to be prepared to answer because most people are going to ask it on the floor. And the procurement process and the capital process needs to have these things filled in as we get to this point.
Knowledge of contractual.
Yeah, I asked them to send that over.
Send that over to me so I can look into it.
Absolutely.
And I will say, there's, there's something a little bit different about catch facing cleaning being contracted out where you say, I have these two murders to do, go do twenty week and come talk to me in two and a half months. Whereas street sweeping, as you said, there are kind of, um, individual circumstances where you need it on shore.
Each municipality, with stormwater regulations, has to do road, street sweeping twice by any, fair?
Um, I think it's less from your dock than the water shaft.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
They have to do it here.
So the thing about this, I understand we need it for emergencies. And we always, we, we, you always say, well, if this happens, we need it. With standard use right now, we plan on doing street sweeping twice a year. Just like we talked about utilization of senior center, community center, what's the utilization of this very high, uh, expensive piece of equipment? Right? And then I would say, are there other communities that we should partner with on the cost such that two towns could have street sweeping done twice a year, same cost to one machine?
Yeah.
You know, and that's, I really want to push that because I think there's an opportunity that, and this is not, John has never said no to this, but I know that shared services in this particular area from previous, my previous select board time was frowned on. It can't be, it was, it can't be done. And I still question, I'm going to go, well, I'm wondering, can it be done or not?
The only issue I see running into that is there's kind of a schedule that works out every year when we do the street sweeping and every town's doing it the same way.
Schedules can be changed.
Well, but it's, it's weather.
Yeah.
It's like. You can't, you can't.
Usually start soon we're done winter, so then everything's left over, it's off of the road.
Right, you can't do it early before you finish, you know, putting down sand and salt, so. I mean, and all of the towns are going to be affected by the same storms that we are, so they'll all need, I mean, expect, we all need to be doing the cleanup around the same time.
I think the final safety component of this all is that most of our, I, this, I know this just from my road has almost no shoulders. And so after the winter is over, you can't see the shoulder lines and, until they're swept. So that's just from a safety component. That's one of the primary things I notice on my street.
Yeah, I think the, the questions just come from, are there better ways to do this in a more, you know, in a less costly fashion than buying a brand new machine? Right? Um, so you just said in twenty twelve, we bought the current machine for fifteen thousand dollars. So are, is there?
Yeah.
Is there an Asian market? We wanted that with this machine, because I've talked to other towns and I've talked to the salesman and they said that more often than not, when they're trading a machine, it's because it's at, it's.
It's one more now.
What is, what is the anticipation?
Once in a while you'll get something like we just, like we bought, but more often than not, those machines are not something that you want to spend money.
And what is the anticipated life of this?
I see, that I don't.
Okay. But the salesperson should be able to answer that question potentially.
Right. Possibly.
I'll buy your.
Yes, they're really.
That's great, it says it right here, they'll ship it. I just found one on eBay for thirty five.
I, I just.
Saying, they'll ship it to you.
So.
Negotiate. Right.
Maybe you should go, go pick it up.
Yeah, we could drive it back. Cross-country trip.
But I, I think it is.
But I I think it is. I I think it is great that we actually were able to do things sooner this year, so actually we can have this discussion now instead of on the floor just before the meeting.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
It's great.
Yeah, no, this this is great. So I guess uh there's also uh the raised concern about. Uh, attendance of special versus annual and uh trying to go and go push through, you know, large structures like this at a. Type of meeting that is typically less attended.
I would say though with a debt exclusion on the warrant, it may not be less attended.
I also have heard this multiple years and I'd love for either the clerk or the town moderator to get us cats from year to year so that we can actually determine what the.
My personal opinion, you know, what we have, what is it, sixty-six hundred residents and change change, fifty-three and change on the tower's quote, like the max we can in annual is six hundred? Okay, all right, so forty-seven. We'll let me just stop there. Everybody's at their sports end. Um, you know, we've got uh like six hundred voters that typically show up in annual town meeting, so my opinion is still very, very low, but um.
Typically, typically, an annual town meeting has about a hundred and fifty.
The last couple of meetings have been more than two.
We had a big one, we had a big one out on the out on the field when we did it during COVID. Typically, it's about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy people at a town meeting at a at an annual.
Yeah, because I think that room can only fit three.
Right.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, so at forty-seven hundred, annual town meeting will be pulling two hundred, so I would say that's that's lower anyway, so. Um, I raising concerns brought up by other members of think on the promise that we're racing, so. Um, Nick, Jack, Ron, is there anything about the street sweeper that you would like to bring up?
Uh, I actually do have one thing, did I hear that to rent one, it was maybe I was wrong, three hundred and sixty dollars a day or something like that was, I I forget the exact.
That is a both from united rental, that would be a piece of equipment that's equivalent to what we have.
Okay, because if 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 I think there's two issues here, one is obviously the maintenance type, which is, if I heard correctly, it's approximately fourteen, sixteen days per year. Um, and then the other was the urgent one that Mike had mentioned, that if there's a accident or something, it has to be cleared up. If you do the maths strictly on the uh maintenance one, I mean, we're we're talking less than six thousand dollars a year.
You misheard the maintenance one because I said that at a minimum, we're out two months sweeping every day.
So it it it's so it's not two weeks, it's two months, is that right?
Two months, two months at a minimum. With the with the current machine, we're probably more like three.
Okay, I I misinterpreted, that that's my fault, okay, um, then the math doesn't work, I thought you said two weeks, so two months is a big, that's a big difference.
Two months.
Okay, all right, uh, that that's fine, uh, it's because it wouldn't obviously make sense if it was less than that, but um, okay, that that's fine, thank you.
So potentially also the new street sweeper would have less like uh. Time put into, I mean, if it's always being a maintenance issue where there's a lot of time being spent maintaining that machine. So the new one, the new one, right, so I mean, I just. Actually would be a lot more efficient for the department to have that.
I I mean, so the street sweeper better last at least ten years.
Right.
And the last one last time you guys?
Yeah, the last one was used last time.
Right, you said it was like two thousand. Okay, so it's it's about eighteen years old now, okay.
So I just want to go back to the math that Nick brought up, why wouldn't that work?
So if you're at three hundred and sixty-seven dollars a day, you're two months, six, fourteen thousand dollars a year. So if you divide three thirty-five by fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars, you get about a twenty year payback period. So we expect a past than an eighteen year, so we're, you know, instead of having debt payments, so we have service payments for twenty years, we have our own piece of equipment. And then what you get out of that is the uh kind of additional response, right? Certainly one where.
And the rent might go up.
But if we rented a piece of equipment, so let's say we rented it for thirty days, right, would we have that on site for thirty days, it would be like we own it?
Yeah, because when I send it back to them, they have to pay for them to deliver it.
Yeah, yeah, right, so so there. So technically, if we were to rent it, there there is no material difference between owning and renting. Except we the 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 bigger difference will be that, one, we don't, two, we're not responsible for the maintenance break, I mean, maybe that's, maybe, so that's a question. Uh, we rented for ninety days, it's in our possession for ninety days, something goes wrong within those ninety days, are we responsible for those repairs, are they responsible for those repairs?
Don't know for sure, but I bet you the rest of the people responsible for the repairs unless we did something that was negligent to it.
Yeah, you know, you run into something or run off. So in ninety days, thirty-two thousand dollars a year, and now we've got a ten year payback period. So I mean, ten year payback period is, that's not bad, um.
Assuming, but assuming the rent stays the same over these four years.
That rent was from the discussion last year.
Right.
So it couldn't have gone since then.
So I guess another, I guess these are, these are questions to research, I think, but I guess another question I'd be honest. Since all of the, I mean, how available are rental, is the rental equivalent for when the town would be, I mean, would there? I mean, I guess i- if we're considering renting as a viable option, is it actually equally like available to us when the cleaning needs to happen?
I think it depends on when you rent, if we know we need it for, say, April first. So we can start sweeping, rent it a month ahead of time, it's mostly available.
I guess I I I I guess I'm imagining that there's kind of a limited pool of companies that do these rentals with. So I don't know, it's it's a question, so it it might not even, I guess I would just want to make sure that if people are considering the rentals a viable option, that they would actually be available when Mendon needs it and not.
I think there's no way to say that.
Right, and that's and that's and that's another advantage to owning is that we would not be, we couldn't be told, like, no, some other town hasn't booked that, you have to wait another week or another month.
Does it change our insurance liability as well, that's a good question.
Uh, so this is a piece of the living we have on our policy, so presumably wrapped into the rental.
The only reason I bring up rental is the, this has been a long discussion, it seems like there's some takeaways here, somebody's giving John a contact with questions on that. Regional shared services, other municipalities that might be interested in going in on it with, I mean, there's there's a lot of discussion, so I'm just saying, we have something that works, it's underlying. We have rentals that are available if we need to. Is this the right time to invest this chunk of money at this particular town meeting for the spring, or can we get through the spring, which was the reason why? It was saying we can't, we can't wait because it won't get till fall, but I'm like, we could rent something in the spring for less than fifteen thousand dollars, right? Yeah, just my point is, there's there's options here and and this is this type of investment, I'm like. I I'm hearing too many questions with takeaways from this discussion with the town meeting in three weeks.
We do, we do, so we do have time to. Research this more and we can set another meeting to be able in this protected art.
I'd like to know why this particular thing is controversial in comparison to all the other things we buy for highway as well, like we. That's concerning to me that we're sticking on this, but we buy all these other pieces of equipment. Over the last few years, we've spent quite a bit of money on that.
Is the total dollar value uh at a particular important time for the special?
Well, to me, it's.
But that's optics.
For me, but for me, it's not, it's not about, there's a need for a street sweeper, what I haven't heard fully is, have we explored all the options to address the need? We had one solution in front of us.
I'm really just more concerned about when will the amount of requested options be satisfied?
Well, as soon as I hear an answer to the two or three that we threw out here in this meeting, I was like, I I have not heard a good answer.
That's a great answer, because then John can go back and get those three and feel satisfied, I just don't want him to keep coming back and keep getting the same new questions.
I think if if we were to.
I'm just getting started.
That's what I'm working.
I think and and admittedly, if you have a think on member reach out to John to talk about options that they need, uh, so that's one, I think the second one is, what is the legitimate? Uh, operational nuances and costs around renting, right? There's no reason we can't just be a community, should rent this equipment, especially seeing it would be on our property for ninety days and materially no difference, you know, it would be to respond to emergencies.
Well, there is, well, there is a difference in responding to emergencies because if you don't have it available, then you don't have it to use. So if you want to say, okay, we had an accident tonight, we'd like to get, we'd like to get the street sweeper out there, right, well, let me make a phone call and schedule it. And then it takes three day, thirty-six hours or a week because there isn't one of them.
So I think the third option goes into that, the shared use, there could be a shared use.
Mutual aid, like we do with public safety.
Right, um, so in the event of emergency, okay, opt-in, right, right, opting can bring the street sweeper over in the middle of the night or the middle of the day when there's a, there's an emergency. So it's a for both the maintenance of the roads and or only emergency only, right?
So we're going to rent dump trucks too?
Yeah, I mean, I I would.
It's like, how far does it go and who sets those?
You know, they're all, they're all fair questions, the issue is that we 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 bought a street sweeper, well, we bought a street sweeper in the past, not just because it was cheap, but because we needed one. And then the stormwater management requirement made it so that it wasn't an option for us to 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 sweep the streets. I I think we should get the answer to these questions.
And it's not about. Because this is about demonstrating due diligence to the folks on the floor that, yeah, we have explored different ways and. This is the direction we're going because of X, Y, and Z, I just think we need to be able to speak to that, you know?
I love buying a go these I own tools, it's like, I I get it, right, uh, it is much better to own and uh. I I can see the value of ten year ROI on an investment this large is not a, you know, it is not a bad investment. Uh, but I think in the essence of due diligence, we should have all of these questions.
Yeah, but and and the comparison shouldn't be with a, personally, it should be with a business. You know, I mean, this is a, this is an operation that the the town, we have to provide the town and. I think it's fine to see if there's a, if there, if if, you know, renting a street sweeper really is a viable option, but I'm going to guess. Um, for a municipality, it's not, but let's find out.
It would be interesting to see if any other municipality in the area rents.
They don't, do they?
Right, yes.
They all have the same sweeper, it's the Elgin Pelican, which is what we get quoted. Aside from Franklin, they have two, one's Elgin Pelican and one's a global. And in my six months there, the global was hard, the Pelican was the one to use and every town has. They don't try anything else because these are the 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 proven ones that work best.
Have you ever seen any, have you ever seen any municipality rent a street sweeper? There's going to be no market for rentals. Well, for 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 a commercial entity, maybe because because the town refused to streak the sweets when they make the mess.
We haven't, we haven't accepted it yet.
Right, right, what's that?
It's a ripe opportunity for new business.
I have one more thing, just so if all these answers come in. Able to um talk about this.
And yeah, I mean, worst case scenario, we've done this, I think, every Sunday time, I mean, because we've met thirty minutes before and voted on, and therefore. A lot of the bad can do with you.
Yeah, why does it go? Oh, okay, all right. So uh, we need a finalization of the warrant, sign from select board to be able to get. Yes, you think comfort edition.
Right, so we leave it the way it is and we, if for some reason we we get different answer, we just pass over it on the floor, that's all.
All right, I'm going to introduce this one and then after that. Um, the next one is a problem street culvert um. Replacement, so um I've wrote written memo and um explained it to both boards here, briefly, yeah. There is roughly three hundred thousand dollars, uh, or so three hundred thousand dollars in estimated engineering costs from design all the way through project closeout, regardless of the three sided concrete box over or a. Reinforced over is uh is selected as. So um, this is this is engineering money, um, we had some design documents together, it unlocks our ability to apply for one hundred thousand. To grant certain hearing, um, and then it kicks off all of the other grant application processes, which includes five hundred thousand dollars and we break the whole grant out into a series. Uh, this is uh an excellency money and uh really important and really expensive infrastructure project for the town, um, I don't think any other way. Um, there are starting to be other funding decisions that is, we get to what can ultimately be a two million. Um, we're expensive, it's possible, um, it's supposed to give minimum, uh, but we don't have to make the decision right now, this is not engineering costs for one of the other. Um, as I went out, we have the funding piece and the capital stabilization fund, the free dash here, the grant piece, and we'll have small financing to do the rest and get that inside of them if. Um, if the town has stability and any budget given here. So we've talked about this number of times, this John's here, talk a little bit more, but if anybody has any questions.
I thought we had decided on the concrete color.
Say that I thought we decided on the concrete.
We voted, we made a, we made a motion for the concrete.
I thought that happened like two meetings ago.
Yes, we voted, we voted, we were going to do.
I know we didn't accept the minutes yet, but. Want to make sure we don't go over that again.
Um, all right, um, and then uh roads, um, this is the continuation of last year's chapter ninety supplemental uh piece. So uh, we get about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars here in chapter ninety funding, um. Last year, it was uh augmented with the land sale account, um. I think uh this board has, finds a lot of questions um about why the senior center one. Why it's one project versus the other when we have these other things that we have to prepare. So um, I I took that discussion from the select board and put that in here as a uh continuation of last year's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So of course, in the the amounts of the debate. It's the genesis here and um this will maybe in kind of accelerating or is, you know, continue to implement the pavement management study. So we have, we have an approach and let's let's.
That's where that original two fifty came out of, it was a percentage, right, Mike?
Well, it's um, I think somebody done in this, you you've gone to the paving guys to say, what are the recommendations and say, well, how do I do that for how much, and you said, well. Why don't you go in, you have a, you should have a, I think you have a recommendation if we have two hundred fifty for three years, right? What that looks like in terms of what roads would be done, things like that, so that's what's driving this, we just first step one last year.
Problem with that is that.
I don't want to hear problems.
So the problem is that they did, there was no sixteen broad, like how much they're going to disrupt, or if that Washington.
Well, I I would say this, they gave you, or should have given you a recommendation, you should at least present that back to us because we're following through with giving you two fifty last year, two fifty, we're accelerating. This was two fifty, so if I twenty-six, you'll be seeing next year's budget, but I think the good thing is we get to move it up, which gives John some flexibility on schedule. And then there's a third year, and having said that, on the floor for this article, I'm sure people will say, what roads, it's real to them now, they see roads getting done, what roads are next, John? What does that recommendation say? No, no, no.
Everybody wants to know when their road's going to get done.
Well, my neighbor came back and said, it's still not done, I said, no, relax, that's like my response to him was. But in all seriousness, what did the pavement guys give us first, a recommendation for three years, two fifty supplemental? Yeah, and but just have that ready because if they ask, and if we approve it, and I'm for this one, obviously. You want to be able to say, right now, forecasting, right now, we're looking at X, Y, and Z for these reasons, based on the pavement study. And then if we can do a third year, we continue, we do a fourth year. It won't be done in three years. We understand that, you know.
Well, there was that nice graph that had, like, if you pay this much, you'll get this much done. Okay, that's right.
No, that's my point, it's real now. This Millville got done, North, North Ridge.
I, I understand why people would ask me to be able to say this is the, but I wanna, wanna make sure that town meeting is voting to pay the specific road, right? Town meeting is voting to appropriate money and then.
The pavement study, we have a tangible, a tangible, which, yeah, we answer with.
I think letting people know about that pavement study at the special town meeting would be useful. I mean, we have the presentation here, but I think we can assume that not everybody has seen it, so.
Oh, a lot of people watched all our meetings, like, as soon as they were posted.
Maybe it's better to say, based on the guidance of the study, we'll go through the.
I was gonna say, hey.
Set, set up our games up.
We invested in a pavement study.
Yeah.
We put money behind it last year, we're putting more money behind it this year, roads are being addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there's anything wrong with saying, well, based on the recommendations, you know, the, these are in the queue to be next, but there's always some.
And, and wood drives, right, that's right.
Wood drivers left.
Right.
Stop calling the highway surveyor wood drive people.
I got you back, John, you see that?
In mint, though.
Last hour, so um, I resource facility, so uh, right now, um, we talked about it, I think last week or year. Um, the, a lot of the road signs, emergency materials that highway um, paths are contained in the former tractor trailer box, conics box uh, with no door, no lighting, no climate control, ride out floor, uh, you know, you know. More difficult space to operate. Um, so this is a um, I have the square footage here, I'll talk through. Um, this is a replacement for that, um, a pole barn.
Replacing two of them.
There's two boxes.
Two boxes, there's one down, way down back that also has snow fence out of the materials in it. This building would be replacing more from them.
At like eleven hundred square feet, um, so we have, like I said, all those things, trap barriers, snow fence, cones, snow sticks, like that thing. Um, we have a, a quote, you know, and we'll have to go and get some more, but we have a quote of forty-two thousand dollars for the materials and the installation. Um, inside working house and then we need to do a electric.
Yeah, so we are gonna electrify it.
Just basic lights, so we're doing that two o'clock, the point of action, what you're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, holding flashlight, trying to inside.
And then um. Yeah, then we can get rid of these, these two other surplus.
An electrical vehicle charger?
Same with, same with all, same with for all of these, you know, I said it's a forty-two thousand dollar work, plus electrical, plus water escalation. Sixty thousand dollars right here, spend fifty-one thousand dollars and we'll come back and close out this one and then we'll come back to free cash and we'll reappropriate. So that's actually an exercise in one of them now. We have a particle from, from twenty seventeen that have professional amounts, so large amounts we're not gonna use, so um, you should expect probably in the spring to have a bunch of funds closed out. Then we'll get our free cash if next year. So there's everything, I always want to kind of err on the conservative overrelegation, um, so we don't have to ask for more like install project, because then we just then go to the estate.
So how much storage, old two stores, maybe two, or nine hundred, maybe eleven hundred? Probably have, one of the problems we have right now is it's traction trailing, it's eight and a half feet wide. So when you're trying to move around and there, move sides around, barrels around, you're tripping over stuff. This building we were looking at is twenty-four by thirty-two by moving this, hold this forward. And it would give us more flexibility to have them. Combing, burden ourselves. No, that makes sense.
Right. The uh, we had a question about uh, but it doesn't sound like it would accommodate additional items. You know, parks are always looking for better storage. If we are putting in place some sort of storage facility, is there a dual use here? I know that there will be some room in it, so we can use a storage stuff and for parks. Yeah, I guess the nine hundred versus eleven hundred, if we made that bigger, would there be better value to the town saying, look, highway and parks can use this in a better facility by area?
Most similar thought with, with all the discussion we had about adaptive reuse here, Morrison Drive there. Highway barn to be replaced based on the highway study, we, was two years ago. Is, is doing a permanent structure right now the right solution, or is there, once again, an alternative or something temporary that addresses the, the need operationally, that gives us time to figure out how this fits? Because if you put a, I'm not sure how permanent this is, but you put an electricity in, it feels like it's a permanent structure on the highway grounds, meaning that's not going anywhere, right? So I just didn't know if there's alternatives in terms of.
Based on the highway.
I think that, I thought the highway study talked about it in, in that. It was worked.
It said, I think, like, it should have been, like, after the senior center. It's like they had it in a scope of scale, capital improvements, and they said, this one was done and built in the seventies, so it's hot to be.
But, but we've, we've talked about parks, DPW for adaptive reuse, we've talked, you've looked at Morrison Drive on your own to put a structure in that I haven't called, you tell me, I say permanent structure for electricity and stuff going in. Is this the right time, or do we need to kind of figure out what we're doing with all these things to find out? What's the permanent solution in this? Only if there's a temporary solution that could meet the needs, that's.
Since this sort of structure that could be moved, technically. I mean, is it, is it like a prefab structure?
It's built on sixteen columns.
And you're gonna build it close to the building, far away from the buildings?
Right where the trailer is now.
Right, where it is, okay.
This probably got added this fall.
Okay, so is it like, you probably talked to Jeremy about it?
Yeah, as the floor continues to amen and this metal stick, it's like, it's age, so.
Yeah, so if it's not like a, via lower base, we know this is gonna be a five year, you know, this was context, this came on the plan as a, like, year or two from now.
And to be fair, process is new, so I mean, I think if we had a conversation a year ago and that initial go, more, more, more than just sending a form out, you might have said, yeah, that, that's gonna go, that storage shed's gonna go, it's not good, I need something, you were on last year. So we're sort of going, we're learning as we go in the process.
Honestly, this, this particular storage facility with the, with the floor has, was brought up to us by the previous highway surveyor several years, that it was not safe then. Well, I'm just saying, in terms of the.
I mean, conics floors can be repaired, so we can, you can repair the floor, you can replace the floor, you can replace all conics too.
Right, well, that's the, well, that's the other question is, why can't we just get two of those and throw them in place in, in the short term?
Okay, so, right, yeah, so.
You can electrify anything, right? So the question, but the question is, would it, would it be reasonable just because we do have this, this bigger overarching plan of everything? How difficult would it be to get another conics box to replace one, or even two of them, because you don't have enough room to, you know, I know, I know there's still, each one is limited in its, in its width, but is, is there a source to do that? And is, maybe, maybe that's cost prohibitive, I don't know.
Yeah, it was like thirty grand for two and probably say no.
Right, exactly.
But, but that, but that would limit the longer term plan too, so I mean, by doing this, you're sort of saying highway at whatever shape performance is gonna be right here, you know, and, you know, so that's just a decision. I just didn't know if it's.
Right, and you have, you, you seem like you have thoughts.
I, my, my thought is that we're talking a lot about something. It, it is impactful, amount of money. But the right thing to do is to, in my opinion, is to make sure that we're set up for success as soon as possible. And I don't know perpetuating what we have as the way I would choose to go. That's just what I'm saying.
Yes, I, I think sort of similarly, especially since there are safety concerns with the current configuration, that like with the floor and with the lighting and the space to maneuver, like, all of these things aren't like, they are potential liabilities for the town, so like, it, um, I guess it would be interesting to know if this is the sort of, like, a structure that could be, like, worst case scenario of moved, if there's like some sort of other building going on.
Like, how would it work without the current highway, this structure would then be adaptive reuse study.
Okay.
It has this long useful life and an adaptability um, beyond old science, sort of this.
Okay, so that's, that's a good way to think of it, it would be potentially an asset to whatever the future of that site is, I mean, assuming that it's gonna continue highway. But, you know, we don't know in terms of the big picture of the town. I, I, it's a relatively small expenditure, given, I mean, but it seems like it wouldn't have that big impact. I know, it's, I, I know, it's.
Six, I, I would do that as small.
It's not, it's not small, but for a building, I mean, for, for a structure.
Yeah.
It surprises me, like.
The cost of replacement, that's, once again, I don't have the alternative.
Nine thousand dollars for a new one?
But I think, I think we don't want to replace life for life, and even if we have well-maintained or, you know, well-functioning conics boxes. The conics box is not the configuration that we need to be able to.
Yeah, that was a, that was a bandaid, when that, when that was obtained, that was, I, I think that was a gift. It was a bandaid to store some extra, because it just didn't have enough room. You know, and we've been, and again, just like we talked about that conics box, we've been talking about replacing it, just like we had to tear the salt shed down at one point, you know, there's things that, things that were never replaced that needed to be replaced because we didn't have money, you know.
Sounds like it probably should have made it onto the.
Correct, it was never.
Didn't rear its head up in quite the right way, but now, now we know, and we have this opportunity with free cash. Right, this is.
These are all.
These are all free, yeah, sorry. It's a while ago that we started this, so.
No, so I guess uh, replacing life for life is probably a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar, that's right, two conics boxes and, you know, some money to throw in electrifying it at a bare minimum, right? Those could be reutilized based off of whatever the, this, this report that we're gonna do, right? The, the question just comes up, what is the grand plan for, like, I know we've got plans, we've gotta go through those studies, I'm gonna figure those things out. Is it actually better to, of course, it's bandaided again and make it safe? Uh, functional, they could, they can.
Not functional, but it's safe.
Brexit.
Unless you bump your head moving stuff.
Uh, so I, I get the difficulty of working in those, uh, working inside those conics boxes, I used to repair them for a living. Um, and if we had a grand plan, does this sixty thousand dollars for this uh, structure fit within that grand plan? No, because that is complete debt, so that's the only, that's what we recently have in conversation, right?
Is it? I hate to say it, is that the only reason we're having this conversation? I just want everybody to be super clear, is it because we don't have a major plan that covers all these scenarios? That we wanna boil that ocean and get that plan and then everybody is satisfied? Or are we trying to save money for a rainy day for something we haven't allocated yet, or are we trying to allocate money to new things? But what is the?
Again, it's the essence of doing due diligence, not just spending, you know, I wanna be like my thirteen-year-old and just because I've got money in my piggy bank, going out to spend, right?
This is a slightly different story than a piggy bank.
I agree, uh, there is a need, I'm not going to uh, totally agree that there is a need, right? Working inside those things sucks. Um, and I'd love to be able to make sure that we can improve that working situation. I'm not fully against what this wants to go after. I'm actually advocating, is there more we would invest in order to get better value of it for more of the town's departments, right? So I would like to know, if this was a hundred thousand dollars, can this be better for highway and for parks? Or does this cover more needs that would be better for even longer term needs? Like, is this even enough? Is there something different we would be doing? We were more than just, let's take what we have, make it a little bit better and just a little bit bigger.
I guess, I, well, I guess to your point, is this type of structure something that can be extended? Like, I don't, I don't know, right? I mean, is, you talk about potentially a bigger structure, but is this, is this something that could have? I don't know, an addition, or, I mean, I don't know, I.
John, you're, this is a pole barn style.
Pole barn, it's gonna have siding on the outside, the walls are gonna be unfinished inside.
Big shed.
It's a big shed.
Right, yeah.
With a lot.
Right, and it's specifically for the highway department, for you to have your equipment in, for your.
It's all of our traffic control stuff.
It's a public shed.
Would it, would a street sweeper? Like, do we, are we need storage for vehicles? Like, I mean, is that?
We have the two barns up in different hill.
Which aren't electrified, which don't have.
One's electrified. We go to cycle, we rotate our, our winter stuff.
Right, right, I just saw you guys move the plows.
The summer stuff goes up to.
Okay. And the same with parks, they shuffle stuff back and forth.
Our says a few pieces around there. At the ball fields. There's stories of horses.
Who, who would be the boys' anticipated timeline for any sort of brand facility or structural plan? In that, and appetite for going on a much larger, seemingly much larger debt exclusion um, after a senior center one was able to do or move to cross to multiple campuses? It seems to me that, that, like, that timeline is, you know, ten years.
It's multiple years, right, right.
Looking at a ten-year. Sixty thousand dollar shed that fast and drubs a quality.
Right, and maybe even like five years, like, like, that's five years of like, you know, productive time, this getting lost by people being frustrated by that they, you know, can't move in the space that's available to them.
So this is, this is the doing it right solution in terms of productivity way is getting a, um, getting a useful piece without, you know, going overboard with building less open planning or six different eventualities.
The kind of, you already said.
Yeah, so, I guess, so, I guess the question is, you know, bringing this forward to the voters at special town meeting. Is there any additional research? So with that previous question for the anyhow, now I can, oh, the streets, we have a lot of questions, right? Are there us, to be similar, we have a set of questions that we want John to get answers to, to bring to the floor?
I don't think it's on John, I think it's actually on the select board, I'm just kidding, I mean, what is the total need of the town, right? We saw the same thing pop up and we talked about, what was it, um, the land use for the uh, the disc golf, right? Well, okay, it's not, it's not, we don't want disc golf, it's like, well, what are we doing with all of the lands? You know that there was something better to do, right?
But do you understand, it sounds like that, like, that's the problem I'm having, is that it sounds like that, and when, when people come to make requests of the board or, or of the town, they make the request, like, John's making this request in the scope of how other, how he's been responded to with other requests. So he's not gonna come here with a two thousand square foot building, he's gonna come here with a, sorry for speaking free. But he's gonna come here with a building that represents the existing thing because he thinks that's what's gonna be approved. And when he comes, that, the question is, why didn't you ask for more? But the thing is, when we ask for more, not when we, when somebody asks for more, then the question is, why do you need so much? So it's, there doesn't seem to be a way for any of us to talk collectively about what the middle of the road solution is.
Turning point with it, we were building this capital planning process and you know, in the future, I think some of your questions will be addressed, Jason, it's just that this issue is in common where we're at the point where we need to make a decision because the existing solution has a number of problems. So like, I mean, it's sort of, wait, it's, there, right, so it's, it's this is not, this is, I think the hope is that this is something that we will not be doing every year in the future as we build out the capital planning process.
It's not the capital plan, this is more of a strategic plan to get benefits, what are we doing with the task, right? So we need to know, what are we doing with Morrison Drive? What are we doing with the legs of senior center if it passes? Now, um, I think it'll pass, but if it doesn't pass, the senior.
The senior center, they, in their current spot, needs more storage. They've got a capital item for storage shed. So if they're not in the new building. I suggest we think about.
We're building lots of storage sheds.
Right.
We have all sorts of old buildings that were housing lots of equipment in all over the place.
But, but, but keep in mind, in this specific case. It's a storage shed for highway because highway has their own equipment they need adjacent to where they are. It would not make sense to have a storage facility for, for the existing senior center. On the, you know, to go out onto the road and, and hunt, you know, what.
What break here?
Yeah, it's, it's just.
Who's going to walk right through, what? It's not, if, if they need, if we need to build a shed, we'll build a shed for them. Just like if we need to build a shed for hot, for the parks, we'll build it up at the parks. But in this particular case, the discussion is that the, the highway has a, a conics box because that's all they could get at the time. They've needed what he's talking about now for a long time, but every other time it's always been denied. But now we have the money and the ability and it, and it's right sized for, for his need, what he needs right now. Adjacent to the building he is and. I think we need to give it to him. And the issue is for the finance committee is, you know, are we taking the money from the right place? Because we've already made the decision with him that this is the building that we need to put up.
Right, and we are, so the, the finance committee is asking for the townspeople, is this the best bang for our buck?
Right, so. Should it be a pole, should it be a pole barn and not four conics boxes? That's the, that's the question the finance committee needs to ask. Not, not, you know, did the, did the select board make the right decision by choosing this building? We've already made that decision, your job is to figure out if it's the best way to pay for what we've decided to do.
Our job is to make sure that the townspeople's money is getting the best bang for their buck. And make sure that we can recommend that we are giving the best value for them.
Right.
And our belief is that the best values to actually spend more. To take care of multiple uses for multiple departments in the town, and that's the recommendation that we can make. We can say, don't go forward with it because we believe there's actually a better value. So we're having a conversation now to go back and forth and have.
So, so to some extent, these are the big picture questions that you're getting into and that, you know, that Jeremy brought up. And we brought it multiple times, you brought it up with the strategic plan, so that I think this board. Wants to move forward with some of those bigger plans, like evaluating. The, the facilities and the properties, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
No, I just wanted to clarify, I didn't think the board technically hasn't decided. I just had a question whether or not there's a, 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 a replacement, which I, I got the answer through this discussion. If a replacement, a life replacement is going to run twenty to thirty thousand dollars, and I would not do it. I would probably recommend this approach. And I'm not so sure that it was actually voted on this solution, just as a point of fact. But we should connect, right?
We should.
And I got my answers, so I'm good. I'm only one.
Yeah. And so we'll be voting on these as well, so.
Actually. Yeah. The select board needs to finalize the special community words night for our first deadline on Monday.
Yes.
So, which we will take a vote. To finalize more and ask for sensitive, and then people can amend it and say, take out our whole. L to all of them, have a discussion. Um, the number, if not in the, right, in, and then the article, the article can also be. You know, not specific to something and motion to not specific to something like a conics box, a pole barn, I can say sixty thousand dollars. Stores for somebody to put out of department. And then leave it to the administration of, you know, policy of the select board to say, we need to replace it. Finance committee says fifty thousand dollars is reasonable within our current financial position. And then the chief procurement officer and the department head who are in charge of it, execute that policy in an administrative sense, well, it's a pole barn, our conics box. That, you know, you approve the money, approve the solution and the, the exit.
That seems reasonable. So, so it's, yeah, so. Do people feel that they have a questions answered about having this article on the word for. With this proposed number from free cash, or do, I mean, it. Do you have like additional concerns?
No, I understand the, the current proposal in regards to the need of uh highway. I understand the lack of uh integration into a broader plan and the time it would take to figure that out. Uh, I understand some of the options that we talked about. So I am personally okay.
Okay.
Um, anybody else in the finance committee?
No concerns, Mr. Nick? Yeah, I would say the lack of integration to a broader plan, Mike, this informs the broader plan. So I want to be really clear on that, you know what I mean? I mean, to me, it's, it's fine, it's, to me, it just more further demonstrates. Uh, highway operational is really going to be there, and we're going to have certain structures there that you're going to be using. That actually informs the plan, it does, it's not, you know, in lieu of, if that makes sense. Meaning, meaning that I'd say Morrison Drive is an example for administrative offices for highway, I would probably say that limits that. Because I want, personally, I'd want to see management in closer proximity to the operation, that's all, it informs the plan, that's all. So as we go forward, it's just, you know.
So have the need for that. So.
A great idea, I think it highlights the need for the plan, in fact, that we don't have a total man serving. Uh, yeah, it's an investment we're going to make and it's, or potentially will make. And it's one that will be the foundation of stuff we take moving forward.
Right, thank you, so. Is that the end of the side away, okay, all right.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I'm just going to take a quick bathroom break, I'm not running here.
Yeah, does anyone else need to break more, uh, like?
So we got the fire chief in attendance. So we got, I should have ordered, this is a little bit different. Got um three pieces for the fire. Uh. So uh, my first uh fire hose replacement, um, so this is about ten thousand linear feet of uh, of fire hose. Um, this will get us all on the same kind of replacement scale and fire hoses have a useful life of ten years, thirteen?
At least ten years, if not a little longer, and some of our stuff is. Goes back to eighty eight, so. Go through the full list of bullet points if you want me to.
Yeah, to be specific.
So we currently have twelve thousand nine hundred eighty feet of hose. It comes in five different sizes. There is over thirteen manufacturers of that hose, which consistency is terrible at that point because it makes it look a little different. And with the nozzles, it has to be a certain pressure up the end of it, so getting that consistency. It's, it's a struggle right now. The hose we have is very light, so it provides more water. But it also makes it heavier, less efficient. Is that, um. The thirteen manufacturers are built over six different NFPA standards, they back to nineteen eighty. So there's different standards that everyone has met. Uh. There's actually sixty one lengths that don't even have the anonymous, so we've got no wind there from. Uh. Uh, a large amount of them were actually received from other departments from there. So about five years ago, we traded a boat that was not usable for us at the time. Did a lot of work, we traded it to another department for, I think, four thousand, five thousand. Then we paid them, so. So if we replace it, it'd be every single piece of hose that we have would be consistent across the board. Every truck would get new ones, matching setup, everything would be the same. Kind of consistency. Uh, why don't we have this less friction loss, so across the board, yeah, rate improvement. Do you need to replace the bulk of nozzles in order to align everything with that hose? No, so when Chief Castle took over, the nozzles that were in service were not. A high quality or good for the department for operations, so we went through and replaced. Almost all of them, we probably have two or three that are left, but we're in a, we're in pretty good shape with the cause of nozzles right now.
So this is starting, this is going to be started from scratch, all your hoes will be replaced with this. You've got a ten year life expectancy on it.
Yeah.
At least. And.
The stuff we're developing is, is higher quality, so it's likely to last for a while or.
Yeah, some places.
In all meetings, same, okay.
Well, I was going to say, you know, in the.
So, so some stuff.
Process.
We can do that, now that we, if. Every, that, some of the manufacturers of the bulk of business are purchasing. Then we're done with it, so.
I, I need to know this, is there a capital or operate, you know, would you move into the operations or ongoing capital?
In the initial investment to get us to a place where we have a standardization that goes to the permit is a.
Right.
Sure, and then as you need to replace six hundred feet of hose each year.
You just mark that through me.
There should be. So, Chief should, we'll talk about this in turnout here, where we need to get that in operational sort of thing. But there should also be an equivalent maintenance line, which is healthfully funded each year and which doesn't necessarily have. A specific intended per responsibility to pass, but to say as stuff happens, this shimmering need replacement. Yes, and according to go to that well, um, and part of that could be hose replacement, nozzle replacement, be any of the six thousand things in the fire.
I mean, the general concern is like, okay, you've got a windfall of, you know, opportunity to buy a bunch of new stuff. And then that new stuff will always be replaced at the same time, and you may not have the opportunity to spend this coming out.
So I, I would hope that our approach is to not necessarily get to the last fifteen minutes of life in a fire hose, I mean, you can't have that.
So, how do you know? We put this tested in and. They check everything to make sure it's good, so as they start to fail, we had probably, I wouldn't say six or seven, it's a failure. Everything's still operational, but it's just. The consistency.
Yeah, it means, it, it, this is everything, right? When you get to turn that, everything uh within, under, everything on your NFA at some point is going to fail, whether it works or not, right?
What's the regulatory compliance around these things?
NFA.
Just a testing?
Fine, there's. Law per se, but it's. It'll hold up in a court of law. Uh, so the standard, I believe, I couldn't find anything that, so the specific date for hose, hopefully.
I know the equipment has.
Turnout here, it's a hard ten year date, whether it sits on a shelf, it's a tired weather.
But it feels like this could then be worked into more of a predefined schedule.
Correct.
And even if you're trading it and buying new, you know what I mean? But you could build that in just like fleet replacement, right?
Yep.
And we got a recently um predefined, you haven't repaired it to something larger and you, you got a goal.
Yes, yeah, the four that I got, I believe it's like fifty six, fifty seven, somewhere around there, if you have. Two more requests for both, but people are terrible getting it back to you, so. Been, been fun getting that.
Great.
It was a lot.
Yeah, I think we initially talked, the like eighty, eighty thousand dollars came down to fifty six, fifty eight. I just don't often get to say it's cheaper than these.
Yeah, especially when it comes to fire, but in front of.
Let's say it again. Um, so the next one is. The one that's about a more sense.
Yes.
So I got the quote from Chief just morning, yesterday morning. Um, so this is uh replacing support one, which is, which is the chief's vehicle and currently uh, and it should be without a um dedicated uh. But in it, um, compartment.
So support one is actually the tents vehicle, that's their, their response vehicle, but it would be. That would be taken out of service by a vehicle, be moved down to that, so. Um, yeah, we're looking to go to a pickup truck, it just moves all of my equipment, which is, I took pictures and doing it. Okay, but there's, I carry a lot of stuff in the back of my car and. It's a projectile hazard, because there's nothing containing any of it, and also it's the car sediments that are probably living in that. So I'm looking to go to a pickup truck, keep everything in the bag. Put a cap on it with a pull up tray, everything organized. Uh, my car is my fire truck, it has to be set up efficiently to do all the roles that I'm supposed to do in a fire scene, so. Playing around with ways of setting it up in the back, but it came in higher than what we initially hoped. So there's two options, I've been going back and forth with. Uh, Isabel and, and we saw green communities, whether a electric vehicle or gas. The electric vehicle is. Eighty six thousand, but that does not include the videos.
Was that a Lightning or a Silverado?
It'll. So it is a Lightning with the extended range battery because I'll be on scenes for extended periods, that's my one concern. Work operationally. I talked to our radio guy the other day, he said that it should, if I keep it maintained at a higher charge most of the time. Uh, the radios are actually still fed off the twelve volt, so we'll have to replace our twelve volt battery more often because it will keep cycling through that. But he seems to think that would work operationally. Uh, this morning I found out the gas quote, which was at eighty thousand. And that's a F one fifty police responding, so it's a purpose filled.
Did they, did they tell you you'd have to replace the twelve volt more often? I mean, they just.
It has a certain number of cycles.
Well, typically with the, with the electric. Because the high voltage speeding twelve volt.
Yeah.
So it's actually almost like a pass through, so you may not have that issue.
Okay, yeah.
But, we'll see.
Drain down the twelve volt.
That used to be a problem way back in the day, but all these modern systems are handling twelve volts that.
I mean, you have expect the pro pound in it as well.
Yeah.
Extra.
Yeah.
You get a little bit of reserve.
Yeah.
Going to be about two thousand dollars to the salt charge organization at the station as well. Uh. Isabel wasn't positive, but she loses a grant for fifteen thousand dollars for an electric vehicle.
Certainly. Yes, so there's seventy, there's seventy five hundred, um, almost certainly available in the next grant, although when we bought Chief Kersey's electric vehicle, that. Where that program doubled when we got the fifteen thousand, um, and these are, um, it's not certain that Dublin would get the availability of this. So there are certain seventy five.
Yeah.
The available trust supply. Um, and I know we, we are green communities, um, so there are standards um to which vehicles are held based upon their usage and the. Um, internal combustion version of the F one fifty adheres to our green community standard. Of course, the electric.
If you keep it under one mile.
That's rated for nineteen combined and eighteen is the threshold for a pickup truck for the green communities.
I'm going to be like, pro elect, we have to take the dive into electric at some point, I think. What happens with the? I'm curious, I think it's a case study for us to find out what happens with you, and I do think there's a lot of other uses for that truck if it doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, hold up to the rigors of you driving it all over the place, so, I mean, I'm.
That'd be, since I began cheap, I put five thousand dollars in the vehicle, that's my.
So you're good, yeah.
So, I don't know. Drain the battery down too far, so. But those batteries, you've got to use them, right? Um, so if you're not using them enough, I'm concerned that.
Which batteries?
The big batteries.
They have a ten year warranty, they have a ten year warranty on them, so.
I only have five thousand, but there's a lot of idle temp on them, which I can, but I. Eighteen, eight, ten hours, so it's. That's my concern, everyone. You have to last that, so how many, how many Isabels these, uh, in your position have electric vehicles?
Cambridge is the only one that I know.
Think, doesn't Lexington or Concord?
Concord's a lot.
I think Lexington does, because I thought they were, at, at the MMA conference two years ago, they were talking about, but, but maybe not.
I was going, I'm going through an image here, the municipal headquarters, and he said he's built them before. Uh, I can find out which communities have. I'd be concerned about listing eighty thousand dollar event that this works out.
It's seventy.
I thought we just heard it, yeah, at eighty six.
Eighty six. For the electric, after the rebate?
So that, that extended range battery is meant to kill a lot of hours, so. Use that for probably like weeks.
Yeah.
Here with the.
Yep.
My, that's my only concern is being unseen by instance, operating the radios.
I slept in my Tesla.
I think it will be fine, but. I'm open to anything, so.
About charging the fires.
So I talked to Chief Kersey yesterday and he said it was, it will probably be around two thousand dollars to install the charger at the station.
Is that, is that on the list, Thompson?
That's not on the list, we have a few. That's not on the list. We have a few, Isabel, also working for Chief Coordination. I'm on.
Isn't there money from National Grid for that?
Few ways.
Yeah, national, yeah. Connected solutions best.
Time to swipe the score a few ways that way. Um, and it wouldn't just be at fire. Of course, we have fire. And we could, um, do we do one for Chief Kersey Homes on energy?
There's also a rebate for at home, I think it's seven hundred bucks.
We want, you know, the library, hometown hall, other.
Is it all that? And I said there was space at the station to install chargers for the community to use and. I don't think we'd be ideal there. We have six spots, two are capable by our own vehicles and two are any of them. So we basically only have two, two spots for people to come in the station. But if we can find a different patient for it.
Horse and Jive is the charging station.
If you can find.
So thi- this um regardless, I'm gonna get this gas or electric, this number will change from seventy thousand to seventy one. Um, but. So I'll see if electric come out.
Is it up to the select board? I feel like it's up to the chief, and then we're just saying, yeah, it's a good idea to replace your vehicle. Or should we be setting electronic vehicle policy through this line item?
I I do think, I I think a really. Uh, on point concern is a projectile concern of having equipment in your S U V, so that if you have a panic stop. There's nothing to stop it from coming through the vehicle and striking the occupants, whereas in a truck, especially one with a with a with a tray. Now it's all secured in the cargo area and it keeps you safe in the passenger area, so.
So the biggest expense of the.
Oh, no questions, but.
Because it's.
Ten thousand dollars.
But it makes it, but it actually makes it usable, because how do you get everything in the back?
Right, you don't have to crawl in.
Yeah, you can't.
So the way it was presented last night, the gas completely outfitted was actually cheaper than the electric alone outfit. I got the gas quote this morning, when I sent it over to you, but.
Yes.
The gas is eighty thousand. I didn't print that one off. Gas was eighty thousand fully equipped without the radio, so it's gonna be. I'm working on the radios. We have some stickers that I can incorporate into this. Yeah, it's doing half as that, so uh without, without the radios, it's eighty eighty thousand to eighty six thousand.
Okay.
Without.
And that's before the rebates.
Yeah, right, and both of those include uh the rear tracks. They are built the same. Yeah, yes.
So, you know, with the rebates, they end up being comparable.
Yeah.
Um, trust the.
Uh, I am significantly concerned about the maintenance cost upkeep of a vehicle that gets so abused in electric.
There's plenty of case studies out there to show you that that's not a big deal.
All right, I'd like to see the case studies.
Pass them on.
Uh, I'd also like to reference the fact that uh it is very difficult for us to come up with a significant number of municipalities that have gone this route. Uh, and the likelihood of municipalities in this state to have gone that route, I expected it to actually be more and very easily to pick a higher number. So I'm concerned about going that way to feed you the subject.
Aren't aren't the lighters pickup trucks going to be like, like just a few years old? I mean, so I mean, that's probably part of like the the slowness of adoption is they just haven't been available.
Um, the pickup truck model, fire chief and it's kind of new to the area, so most chiefs get towers. That's.
Yeah.
The big vehicle that everyone. There's a couple every year that are getting pickup trucks, but not around here. Don't.
So I guess to your concern about not getting driven a lot, it's it sounds like you drive it frequently, just not long distances.
Little mile station, so.
Right, so but like you're using it every day effectively, just not.
I know enough about battery chemistries to know that uh it's important to cycle these at certain levels, max and bins, and what they do to overall life and. All the other stuff, and that concerns me about a short term used vehicle. Um, so I don't know enough about the current technology zone vehicles and whether this applies.
But Jason, you said you you have.
I mean, proof is that we have a leaf sitting outside that still runs and it's like ten years old, and it never gets used. Like, that's a great case study. It sits in our backlog.
So we said.
Right, I mean.
I think it's looking for.
Maybe.
Substitution.
Well, I got a couple of case studies up on my computer. I'll send it to you.
Is, I guess the question is not, I guess, well, I have different opinions about electric versus.
Right.
But the question tonight is practically about whether. Are they able to leave.
On the.
On the warrant.
So the motion, um, which we use the motion to then complete the fund and then. The restrictions on the fund of what we look at. So if you say go live in twenty twenty four for F one fifty. And we can't get a twenty twenty four, we can't go down by twenty twenty five, right? So it would be directly interested in the description, right? So they would say, if they.
I was replacing.
Or a similar.
With this stolen, we need to replace this car. This is the money we're allocating to it.
Yep.
What that is. It's a T B D. I was kind of curious about support two. What is that?
So support two is a pickup truck that currently has a cap and slide out on it. It's basically somewhat of a hazard.
Yeah.
Supplies, it's kind of repurposing mode right now, because the vehicles that we brought on. They take on different.
Minions, yeah, the reason I bring it up, if from a criticality standpoint, support two versus support one, like. Your your vehicle versus the support two. If the E V doesn't work out for you, or you were to go that route. You've got another car that's gonna in the fleet that's gonna be replaced in a couple of years, probably, I would think. It's good condition.
Yeah, it's in good condition. That was actually the vehicle that we got from the highway.
Right. Twenty two.
Yeah, there was. It's an F two fifty. If you do use it to follow our lot and systems, I don't know how any of you.
Yeah, I I was just wondering, because I know you you made the point, well, if it doesn't work in that specific capacity, there's other areas in town it could be used.
Yep.
Right? Uh, I just saw that on your, but I know parks, they got like a three fifty though, and um, I don't know.
Could be.
Can I ask when like brush truck is coming up?
Brush truck was funded two years ago.
Okay.
It's. In the process of being built finally, we finally got it, right? Because at the beginning of this.
I I just, I I know we have some fires behind my house, so.
Yes, yes.
That's why I'm asking.
It's being built. We should see it. It's on hold.
Okay.
It's better. It's a F five fifty was not the easiest vehicle to get one. Or a gas F five fifty, extra cap to go up.
Okay.
So it's been.
So.
So it is being built. They have the chassis in there and asking me questions, specific to the body, so hopefully by the new year.
Awesome.
So I think at this point, select board is in favor of including this.
Against.
Yeah, up to that, the maximum amount.
Um, yeah, I think at seventy thousand dollars in here, um, I typed eighty, yeah, my screen shared and everyone was on me. And you should be likely higher than that. Um, eighty five, yeah, if we're talking the possibility of an electric vehicle. Um, because we'll have to be able to, you know, issue a purchase order.
Right, because if there's a, if there's a rebate, right, that's right.
What's the E V amount?
Uh, the vehicle is eighty seven.
Eighty seven, right?
Eighty six, six forty two.
Eighty six, how much we got? So eighty seven plus two thousand for the charger and the doctor, we're at eighty nine, plus your.
That's not for the radios, which I, I got down to like seven thousand today. I think I can get them over from that. So.
For the radios, that's gonna be.
Can't transfer from the other, from the other.
We can, so the way that we're setting it up, there's gonna be a radio, three radios in the front with remote head to the back. So I initially got a piece for all three radios with the remote heads. We have two that we can repurpose to it. And it only dropped it down a thousand dollars by adding the two full radios. They're still charging us that much for the remote heads. I need to clarify that with him tomorrow, but he's another.
Funny business.
Difficult person to get.
That's another one of these, like, one or two sources of.
First and foremost, our radios. So.
Okay.
One person that.
Makes sense.
Source of the radios.
So that never will.
Yeah. House. So, yeah, and then the motion would be, you know, indissociative, but if you don't want to knock fire rates.
Right.
All right, uh, one more fire item on here to discuss the conclusion. Turnout here. Um. So turnout here, we have uh twenty five firefighters, six of them have the second set of turnout here.
We did one six.
Right, sorry. Um. So, uh, after a response to an incident, here goes through, you know, your chat here comes through, goes through your tractor and all the cleaning process, um, and then. Apart from those six, there's not the ability to then respond during the turnaround period. So, um, it's the attempt of the, um, department to talk about this kind of how you're some blue capital to. Really ramp up the amount of second sets of turnout here we have, in addition to this ten year shelf life, no matter what, that she referred to earlier that we're gonna have to replace them. So it will be, it was part of the capital plan, I'm solid, thirty six thousand is the magnitude of it, but talking about its operational requirements, um. It should stay in the capital plan. We should expect to fund it as a town from top two and a half and within the operating. So it's capital that we can pay for through the operating budget, uh, because of its cyclical.
So within the last year, the first year is a hundred and about a thousand dollars, so it's. Seriously, the fire category related places, sky and pocket. Uh, we have. Thirty two full sets of gear for the twenty five people. Uh, we have a odd number of codes and handles to track that issue down, but, um. So like Jeremy said, we have six of our career guys, six of the seven career guys have a second set of gear. So we respond to an incident. God forbid, everyone gets exposed to the carcinogens and the fires. It's our policy to wash our beer as soon as we can, after it's reduced the cancer risk. The process of washing it can take up to a day to get it fully dried for a single set, so it's. It it's an issue. Uh, so if we were to have more gear for second sets, we could switch out, because right now, if there was an incident. We're having six people, if I'm going to shut up for that first one, six people able to respond to the next one. They have a set. So I spoke with Jeremy just to get a cycle going, this will jumpstart us. We have. The gear range is from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty three. I think the biggest chunk is between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen at this point, so. They're beyond the half life, so we're getting to the point where we're gonna have to start replacing a large order. I think they might have gotten a grant in two thousand eighteen to replace it. I'm positive to join the department.
I mean, you originally had a lump sum out towards twenty nine, like two hundred thousand, that we pulled in and broke up into smaller increments.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable managing this replacement within the operational budget? Because it's. Yeah, going forward, it'd be more on you to kind of manage your your equipment budget, understanding that. It's not going to be going back for a lump sum. You've got to manage that turnover.
That would be ideal, I think.
Yes.
Right. Just so you have that. Kickstart it and then just keep going.
You can manage it in your equipment budget if there's additional forty thousand dollars appropriated to your company's current.
No, but I mean, that's kind of right sizing the budget.
Our current P P E budget is fifteen thousand. That's just, that covers all of our gear, not just the structural gear. Gloves.
Impossible stuff.
Yeah, it's.
Do you expect, um, do you expect like anytime soon? Chemical changes to be happening in the equipment that you guys would want to adopt? I mean, I know they're working really hard on new chemicals.
Twenty twenty seven, the state is mandated that all turnouts here that sold this P P S.
Twenty twenty seven?
There.
Yeah.
It's the first state.
That's a big one.
Can they actually, it it, does that actually exist, P F S or?
It does.
It does.
So we.
It's the other thing.
We have, or, oh, yeah, they're just replacing some.
Yeah, they just can't.
Right.
They just don't.
It's B P A.
Not yet.
We're able to get a franchise stream in the state and we're getting three sets of gear for it. Initially, we had a P P S three gear. Last minute, our sales rep called and said that the sets that they had made and in service were failing, so they pulled it from. So the three sets that I'm getting are. P F S contained, but.
And what would you, what would you be purchasing now then? P F S free?
Yeah.
They're not on the market.
So I actually spoke to someone.
Doesn't that restrict us?
Yes.
Yeah.
So. The components are, everyone who uses the same components, it's just how they're assembled. Some people figure out how to assemble them, some people have. The one we ordered hadn't figured out it's something to do with the tape on the seams. Uh, I spoke to someone tonight, different manufacturer, because we're having issues with another one. It's been a fun process, but. Uh, he has a set that he's gonna bring down to my next, we've got it next year.
All right.
So this one, we could potentially purchase P F S three gear to stay ahead of the curve.
Yeah, I'd hate to have some regulations. Yes. And then we're forty thousand out.
Manufacturers were not.
That's how regulations work, right?
I. Well, that is basically taking it back to the eighties with the breathability and everything with the nineties that are there. The new stuff is very breathable, but it's. So they're kind of encapsulating even a little more.
So you would be more uncomfortable. It's like a comfort thing, but but safe.
A little more stress to the body, but.
The poison.
Okay.
Well, I mean, like, right, like, it's like you're sweaty and nasty already.
Most important thing is the personnel to keep them safe.
Yeah. All right.
So this one's six sets.
Okay.
Six haven't changed.
Fully outfit a single fire front with brush gear, structure of your helmet. Eight thousand. And every January first, like you said, the the increase, it's five percent increase every year.
Just.
They they buy the.
Why do you have to find them every first?
Because they know what you're gonna do, not buy it.
Mm hmm.
They.
Yeah.
As long as it's a certain number. For that, so they almost do about the same percentage. Right. See, not coordinated.
Can you think about staffing? Side note, do we have, if we don't have it, can we start to develop an F T E cost by department? When I hear, you know, it's not just salary and benefits, but it's flat, you know.
Equipment costs.
Equipment costs.
That's for one set.
Right. Right, and everybody should have to.
So when you're thinking of a staffing, whether it be fireplace, whatever, a full, a full time equivalent, F T E cost should include some of that stuff, so it might be a stick with salary.
So then we get, we got that with that grant for for F T E's, right? And then it was like, okay, well, if we get them, that's another hundred and twenty thousand dollars we're gonna spend in equipment. Nothing's free. Okay.
But it's a good exercise.
Yeah. Go on, bro.
Thank you. We should probably try to move along. I guess any other questions about that, that item? That. It's like, we're in favor of that, so.
That is the last fire item on the line.
All right, thanks, dude.
If someone was listening to this meeting.
She's there. Her guy's just trying to get high charged, she gave her charger, so she wouldn't have taken. That whole stop.
It's pretty clever, right? I was gonna get up and check up, see if somebody was harassing, because I heard it was actually me talking.
Who's that jerk?
Next item we have is police cruiser replacement. Um, we have Chief Kersey online, um, to talk about this a little more in depth. Um. We have a police cruiser replacement, um. Approach on the general fund, and then uh this adds to, is additive to that, all that, all that Chief Kersey take away, um, this is what we're discussing now.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My camera just went weird where I can't see any of you guys now. I don't know what happened, but um, I'll just talk to the blank screen.
We we can see it fine. You you look as weird as you always.
It's likewise.
Exactly. I knew you'd say that.
Um, so, um, this came about when Jeremy came to me and said that, you know, the free cash number is where it was and asked me if I had any investments. and asked me if I had any investments within the police department I wanted to make. Um, the police department pretty much is usually all set. And I'm so used to not asking for stuff, just because that's the way we've been for the past ten years, that we just haven't had money to actually invest in anything. Slap on the capital plan last year, and we helped get the cruiser count to where it needs to be from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four. Um, and average cruiser replacement went from thirty-eight thousand to about sixty-three thousand. So, it significantly has gone up in the past four years, and we're in a rotation where we're getting frontline cruisers right now. Uh, we also made an investment to make sure our capital is in care of every year throughout, throughout our operational. Um, so we did get that all set with our actual operational, um, everyday cruisers. So, these are our frontline cruisers that, that fund takes care of. We do have admin cars, um, and extra cars that we use for different, different things. We have the, I consider the detective car and admin car, we have a supervisor's car, we have the pickup truck that's twenty years old that we invested in um, twenty years ago, that has seventy thousand miles on it. Um, what we usually do is we'll take a cruiser that was a frontline cruiser, we'll paint it and put it into one of these vehicles. Um, currently, detective car has a hundred fifty thousand miles on it, supervisor's car has a little over a hundred. Uh, the truck I said has seventy thousand miles on it. Um, everything we're replacing right now, because of the way the rotation went, and we, we extended it a little bit longer, because we didn't have the, the money needed to replace them, all the cruisers have over a hundred thousand. So, I'm not really going to take one of my cruisers I'm replacing now from the frontline cruisers and replace those cars. It doesn't really make sense, I would just hold on to them. Um, so I think, I thought at this point, like we did twelve years ago, when I first developed this plan as a sergeant, that we'd invest maybe into one of these vehicles, um, either a detective car or the supervisor's car, or maybe even replace the truck. Um, so that was my idea to kind of inject something into the cruisers that we usually flip over. Um, and I am looking at electric, um, I'm quite pleased with the electric vehicle that I have right now, had about two and a half years. The only maintenance I've put on it so far, um, has been a new pair of tires. Um, I have a little over twenty-two thousand miles on it, so the tires did go quicker with it being all-wheel drive and they're heavier tires. Um, but that's it for maintenance. Um, I've put twenty thousand, so in two and a half years, so I'm averaging about seventy-five hundred, eight thousand a year. It's been great, I was resistant to it, and Mazor brought it to me, but I'm very happy with the results of it. Um, so what I would plan to do is probably make an investment, um, in, in probably two more electrical vehicles. Um, I have one that, um, of the three that we're placing right now, that's going on a lease. Um, the one that's going to be replaced in July, frontline cruiser is going on a lease. So, what I would look to do is probably relieve one of those release, those lease payments, and maybe inject, um, an electric vehicle into one of those admin cars. Um, and actually turn the supervisor car probably into an electric car too. So, I'd be, I don't think I'd want it as a frontline cruiser right now, but I think, um, I'd have no problem with a supervisor's vehicle and maybe a detective vehicle being electric at this point. Um, and again, to utilize the grant money, so I contacted Inmaizer and we dialed back from her. Um, last time, we did get fifteen thousand off each vehicle. Um, the police lightnings are a little bit cheaper, if I went that for supervisor vehicle. Um, they're a little bit bigger than the Mustang, I don't think I'd, I'd want a Mustang in a supervisor's car. Um, we're looking at outfitted for police, about sixty-one thousand. So, it's actually cheaper than our gas version of an Explorer, um, we pay about sixty-three thousand for that. Um, and that's before the rebate, so if the fifteen thousand dollar grant was still available, and before it was unlimited, how many you could buy in the town, um, that would knock us down quite a bit. So, that's what this investment is for, um, just to inject some capital into the vehicles that are getting we've hired mileage on our front lines. I know that was long-winded, any questions?
I think it's a great idea.
Derek, the only question I have is for the, uh, the fleet replacement seemed pretty, pretty straightforward. The, the admin cars, that, should we expect that admin cars from the fleet standpoint be sort of one-offs as they are needed down the road? Or do you see that ever moving into the operational budget space where you have a predefined replacement schedule for those as well?
No, I think they're one-offs, and they did work well, um, the previous decade or so. I think what happened is once inflation took place and we, we fell behind with the operational frontline cruisers, it was harder to take a vehicle that had seventy thousand miles and turn it into a detective vehicle, because I don't mind doing that. We, we generally take pretty good care of our cruisers, uh, maintenance-wise, paint-wise, we wash them all the time, they're, they're in great shape. So, a vehicle with seventy thousand miles, I have no problem rotating that into a detective vehicle, painting it black, you know, making a small investment. But whereas these all have higher mileage now, I think since we get back on track with capital, I think three, five years from now, um, I think we'll be fine, I think we'll be looking more at, you know, cars having seventy to eighty thousand miles when we replace them, which we should, because the multiplier is about one point five for a cruiser. So, that's kind of what you have to consider for the wear and tear for a cruiser.
Thanks.
Yep, no problem, thank you. No one wants to beat me up today?
You got to go at nine forty-five, so.
I
You haven't listened to this the whole time, that's
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
So, do we have more, I think we have more.
So, I'm going to talk through a couple of these down here, I'm going to skip thincom reserves for the moment. Um, so, thincom reserves, you all are familiar with the, with the concept. Um, we have about twenty thousand dollars, I believe, in the, in the term by budget. Um, this comment made here that with this level of free cash, we'd like, uh, sometimes people would like to see fifty and sixty thousand dollar um, total thincom reserves for the end of the year flexibility, uh, so that's why I put it here as a placeholder. As a reminder, it takes both, both thincom and select board to using it for anything. So, anything that doesn't get used, then falls through the free cash at the end of the year. So, it's a pretty safe place to have a healthy reserve, uh, because it takes, you know, the I would like to, we just upped the number to begin with, beginning of the year, um, coming forward, but that's something we'll, we'll talk about. Uh, police and fire liability insurance, um, we budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars and then something pretty big thousand dollars. Um, we had to pay this bill, um, to maintain our liability insurance for our police and fire departments, so it was charged to an account where it just belonged. Um, so what this does, incorporating money into this account, we're able to take that expense back off the inappropriate account and, and, and to the ledger. Uh, emergency management, so we have an executive session at the end of this to talk about, um, strategy, policy, and dollar amount. Uh, I talked to, uh, about using the hundred and ten thousand dollars that's in, um, the reserve negotiation and use that for the percent where it continues to be used. Um, there is a number left over at the end of that, so select board, um, sets a powers means to negotiate with individuals and gives me a cap that is less than the number available in reserves. We don't need an additional appropriation, we can make a transfer for reserve, transfer from reserve for negotiation later uh, to this slide, I don't think we'll need additional appropriation. Recreational field technical assistance, um, so this board has set up a commission, um, to us, to think about recreational fields, what's happening in a regional level. Talking with parks just yesterday, before, um, I think this number would likely be quite a bit higher than ten thousand dollars to bring in a, a specialist, um, outside firm to do something with this, ten thousand dollars is my placeholder. Um, so this is, of course, up for debate, um, I think it was, um, it was a great idea both by the board to, you know, put uh, weight and light behind the approach and say, let's give you some staff to, to assist in here. We were talking about a number of the thirty, forty thousand dollar range to get an comprehensive, um, approach outside. Again, for the purposes of tight so, including it, um, I think senior center redesign cost, um, this, this was appropriated into the fiscal, that's a transfer in the fiscal twenty-four bucket um, from available resources, but the work didn't occur until fiscal twenty-five. So, that money got transferred, saddened account, and it used and fell through free cash. So, now that this expenditure is happening on fiscal twenty-five, we're starting to get bills, um, we need to be able to, um, pay those bills, so that might have fell through to free cash for fiscal twenty-four without appropriating that in the correct fiscal year and being able to use that, um, the way it was initially intended. And by redesigning, I mean, from the original, yeah, from the main. Um, building maintenance fund, we have, um, a central building maintenance fund, we even has been looking up before, we found, but it has somewhere around twenty thousand dollars in it, um, Department one-nine-two. This is for, uh, stuff that breaks during the year and we don't have, uh, you know, uh, doesn't reach a level of capital, it's kind of unexpected sorts of things. A great example would have been the two things that, uh, this board allocated harbor money for the council on occasion recently. It was seventy-five hundred dollars, eight thousand dollars for, for, um, you know, refrigerator and all that, just things that they needed to keep their operation. But for harbor, we, you know, just got through a third part of stuff right away. Um, it's for door replacement that comes out of here, but stuff that comes up throughout the year to keep our fiscal plan up and running. Um, sometimes it's the hundreds of dollar frames, we just need to fix something really quick, we need a centralized account. So, hopefully we can get some more defensive maintenance on this. Um, and the idea would be, um, if you don't need it somewhere to thincom reserves, you don't need to spend it on maintenance and it falls through free cash. Glad we didn't have to fix. Uh, needs and news, assistance is left for it now. Um, there was, not sure how that number was built up, um, but there are a number of professional development opportunities um, that booked myself and said, assistant would take part in, um, I would take part in one of them. We, uh, want to make sure that the select board, um, and whole department has, um, ability to attend, uh, MMA annual conference in January, um, it's a really worthwhile, um, endeavor. Um, and so, in addition to those sorts of things, we also want to be able to say, hey, I want to do this seven dollar and I can say yes to a hundred dollars spent, I'm sure when they might not have the ability in their own budget.
I'm not sure we ever increased this when the board went from three to five for MMA and everything else, so it's probably overdue.
Um, so those are all the non-salary pieces, so I think preempted a lot of the salary discussion, we'd tell our discussion before. So, what I did here is take all of our departments and say, here, this column D is using the hundred and twenty thousand dollars reserve for negotiation and doing a, what, a two percent call of I haven't done this with the board before, I never, I'm very rarely ever going to be due a budget that says twenty-six thousand eight hundred seventy dollars since it's come down to eight point seven thousand dollars, not going to work in pennies and handfuls of So that's what these are all around the first. Also, I'm slightly wrong. So these are approximately 2% of what, of what these salaries. Like there are a handful in here where we don't have one or the other. So select board, there's not a really good way to present. Cola, because there are contracts for either of the two people who charge this account in fiscal 24. So I put that on reserve for negotiation. Assessor and treasurer collector have new contracts in fiscal 25 and fewer staff at the moment. So we have kind of attrition savings. So they don't require anything here. So it might either. The ones that are split 50/50, you can, it's 2%, 2%. The only other one that's a little bit different is town clerk, but he said the reserve for negotiation, that initial 2% is already in the top of the salary budget. And then the additional 1,400 is the additional 2% that shouldn't be salary be sent. Should they, it doesn't salary be sent. So that's it. We need to get to the 4% of fiscal. And for overtime here, of course, increase. And you can see there's some rational things like. Even hours of people's time. So that. It would be an additional free cash appropriated to 76,000 dollars to fund that additionally. 2% less those changes that I gave at the top. And from the 110,000 dollar reserve negotiation, there would be 28,950. So conceivably, he's at 28 to 76, but I wanted to make sure I discussed yesterday.
Just clarifying. So the 70, 76,450, that total, there was a line for town clerk. Is that included in there? Because I thought it also has a line in the free cash. In the, in the previous table.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Town clerk is there. So it should say, it should say 20. So it was up here because I had it. The town clerk article was five. I'm going to have to redo calling. You know, I'm. So the town, to set the town clerk salary was five. So I considered it out here, but. Actually, it's one precedent, the vote to set the town clerk salary and vote to appropriate money into the town clerk salary line or two.
Thank you.
Logistically, these votes, free cash votes are majority? Or are they two thirds?
The only one is to think is, is the two thirds when it comes to money is to take money back out of stabilization?
I know that's right on the seal.
So I gotta like write cliff notes because we do this twice a year and I forget in between.
Don't worry though.
Someone will remind me.
Particularly the model.
So that's the, that's all, that's all of the finance related particles. Sweeper problems certainly. This department poses fire vehicle. Fire storage, this is what we just talked about. So.
There we go.
So this is.
Salaries.
Yeah, this is the salary we just talked about. So I moved the, I'll renumber. I did this one in the meeting area. But I'll have the town clerk accept salary after we revoke. And have a blind effect and as a non-familiarity and went on. Around here. In commerce serves, ability insurance. First, the management. Technical assistance, redesign services, building maintenance being dues. So here are the three, the last three that aren't finance related. Don't involve the expenditure of money that's finance related. So in the annual town meeting, the board of health. Board of board of health will spread and then enterprise fund from useful salt waste. That's one article. Another article raised an appropriate at 681,000 dollars. Into that fund, 681,000 dollars was also credited in our local receipts to the general fund budget. So you're not raising that money twice at the tax bill record and they're basically. Tax bills are running out as they should be. The fund, the general fund is being credited with all the revenue, just like it was in fiscal 24 and every year before. And all these expenditures are being taken out of the general fund just like it was in fiscal 24 and year before. So what this article does is it rescinds that appropriation into the enterprise fund because right now on our tax free cash sheet. Topper, but we're supposed to send our total accounting money and we're not. So this rescinds that appropriation and says continue to do fiscal 25 for solid waste, same with all those things with solid waste. And then fiscal 26 will utilize the enterprise fund in a way that was intended by town meeting and just appropriate the money to one fund rather than two. I have a discussion with board health. They're on board with it. I have a discussion with accounting. They're on board of not having to do a million general entries to move stuff from one fund to the other halfway through fiscal year. I think this is the cleanest way.
Is board, I mean, who's going to support the article?
Yeah.
At the meeting?
So board health didn't vote on putting this article in here. We talked about it as a concept and, and meeting, in open meeting with two of the board members, myself and the health admin. Didn't take a vote on supporting, sponsoring. So it would change the essential question. Yeah. And they don't really have that opportunity to vote before our finalization. So it's like, what if you want to sponsor the article?
Well, I feel, I'm just saying, like, I feel like it has to be unless they're going to stand up at the meeting.
Yeah.
And explain it.
But you talked to them about it and they're in support of it. Then I, and it has to, this has to happen. So.
Yeah, if no one else, we need to do it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I understand. I just want to make sure it's clear when we vote on.
Should read select board.
I, is that what we're reading?
Yes.
I think that's for writing web as well because I initiated this.
I just want to make sure Alan, I wouldn't want to. I want to make sure Alan.
I, I agree.
The select board amended the lease at the club school to put in a electric vehicle charger and now embrace the associated easement deal with you that. Article 32, if adopted, would prevent article 31 from needing, wouldn't need article 31. This was the suggestion from town council that says, we talked about it. It's the first time I've seen the language though. It authorizes, well, in a fiscal year, so we need to do this feature in annual town meeting. Authorizes the select order to accept easements for all these reasons that don't have. Without having to wait in going to town meeting to get it. So having to accept as senior agents and I mean spring, we wouldn't have, you don't get accepted at the point. And that's all.
Number one. Good job.
Do we have any more money articles or is this?
So. We need to vote a recognition.
So I, so I worry needs to vote to finalize the warrant, inclusion of articles in the warrant. Finance committee is not into other.
I mean, if you were ready, you could, but, but you want to go through one at a time now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And on behalf of your.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So we're gonna have anything else to discuss. Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn? Polls in favor?
Ron Zemudo, aye.
Nick Xian, try.
Mike Ray, you're aye? Was it 102?
Excellent.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion to support it, support the. The warrant as presented.
We have to use the finalization language?
Finalization, yeah.
See. Just saying.
With the new base of article five as.
It, we're leaving now. It's, what can we finish? Everything's gonna happen.
Please finalize the question from Warren is presented. Second.
Any further statement? Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
So it is finalized as. So thank you. Alright, so just, I guess I will check in with you about logistics of getting this printed. So like, yeah, okay. Alright, this needs to go out to the, needs to be. Available to the public on Monday at 4th. And that needs to be mailed out in the, which I believe is going to be as an insert of the newspaper. Is that, is that correct?
No, we send them out direct mail.
Oh, direct mail. Oh, okay.
Man of the chairman, is there anything besides the, the executive session that, that can't, that can't be moved to next week?
So it's a good question. I mean. So I know there's a reappointment. That one is so short potentially that it might be as much time to like do it as pass over it. The old salt box road update.
I, I jumped ahead some time when I'll have one next month.
So and then we, we did skip over the meetings of the, sort of the minute. Are we good with playing out the minutes until?
There are some comments.
Okay. So I mean, I think. I'd be inclined to still do the reappointment because I think it would just take us a minute.
I move to a good point. Samuel trials and council council for a three-year challenge by June 30th, 2027.
Yeah, discussion. This was, this is a reappointment after completing the, the search. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great, great. And that way we don't have to carry that one over.
Yep.
So. Salt box, we're, we're gonna pass that one. Okay. Let's see, future agenda items, I think. This is gonna, our next meeting is next week. So I, so I think we did, we did pass that one. Alright, so right, we're passing over the management. Just want to make sure I haven't lost anything.
Next meeting, November 6th, the assessors want to join.
You have the assessors on the 20th? You mean they want to come up at 12?
Yes.
Okay, so they're, okay, well, this is.
We're obsessed with right here, the select board, they want them to vote on percentage of the senior means test exemption. This needs to be held prior to the classification hearing.
Okay. So then. Making sure we haven't missed anything. I think the only other thing on here before the executive session is the town administrator report. And I, I guess I know, I, I'm not sure what you.
Did you not say anything that?
One question that come up about the, the status of the general bylaw review committee. So if you could say.
Yes, sir.
If you could say something about that and that, there's other stuff that you can save till next week and be okay.
Yeah, I will say. So you've gotten, you've received. Four, five, five letters. Five folks are interested in the, in the case. So I've taken to start to schedule stuff. Schedule kind of interviews with them for next week and the week after to then bring to the board. Since there's no actual committee to do the interviews, I'll. Be that first, bring to the board. Then you can, you can be on to the extent you wish. We are beyond such a 45 day working period that is required for, for commission and for performance requirement. Since we have yet to receive the number of people whose. Number slots that there aren't, decided to take that to mean we can extend the. Select board doesn't have enough people to appoint, so we keep the posting active. So we will go beyond our 45 day period. And once, once we have folks doing it.
Were there other things that you wanted to? You've given us some lot of updates tonight, but is there other things?
Yeah.
Okay. So then just so our, it's already been said, but I'll just formalize it. Item 14, next meeting. So our next. Regular meeting is November 6th. So one we have up tonight at 6:30. And then we'll be meeting again on the 20th, a joint meeting with the assessors for the tax classification hearing. And with that. I think that. Ready for me to move to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've got title 15. So. So. I move to enter executive session pursuant to session MGL 30A, section 21A, reason number two, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. To conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations and the chair so declares. Emergency management and furthermore, the board will not reconvene in a session. For the purpose of adjourn, adjourn. So we will be adjourning from. Executive session. Alright, discussion. And then this needs to be a roll call vote. So. All in favor, Bruno's aye.
Carter, aye.
Cooter, aye.
Morale, aye.
And so then we will stop the recording. Thank you for joining us.